Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the committee home meeting for Tuesday, June 12th. Health and Squamish increased to ultimate classical homeless away email. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. There is an agenda in front of the committee. I'm looking for motion to adopt the agenda with by councillor Kent, seconded by councillor Chappell. All those in favor, provost, most carries. We have two delegations. Our first one is the Squamish Constellation Music Festival. And there's a whole bunch of you, but pass it over to Kirsten and you can introduce your plan.
Okay, well, I'll take it from now.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, good. She's so good at that. Also has an extensive background in the music industry too, having started her own PR music company, also worked with agencies, organized festivals, and she loves music. We move on over to Kat Kunzi. She, out of the four of us, is the, well, she only moved here two years ago to Squamish, but she's totally ingrained in the community already. She is a festival organizer in Texas, still working remotely from Squamish. And we lose her every few weeks when she goes off to do beautiful festivals there, but we're so excited because she provides us with this incredible logistics strength. So, so happy to have Kat. And then we have Kurt Larson. He's a beer guy predominantly, which is great for music festivals, but he also has a really extensive business background as well, where he worked in the craft beer industry in working with festivals and working with bringing lots of the best craft beer people together. And we're so happy to have him. And then me, I don't look like that anymore because my hair, but I worked with the Squamish Valley Music Festival since its inception. I helped with it a lot and loved it. Miss it now that it's gone, and we're just really thrilled that we could put this together for you. So, that's who we are, and here's the festival.
Yeah, so I'm going to just explain a little bit about the look, the feel, and some of the practical pieces, and before I pass it on to my partners. It's a three-day festival that we are hoping to do the third week in July, which seems to be the most vacant opportunity for us that worked with some of our partners, Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday. And primarily, this is a festival by Squamish for Squamish. So, we really want to create something that's world-class, that brings a lot of music and art and culture into the community for that weekend, but also beyond with some legacy pieces. And something that celebrates great culinary experiences as well as craft beverages. And a weekend that people will plan on, maybe even plan their summer around, not plan the weekend to get out of town. So, we want to keep it very inclusive. Again, it's, you know, for Squamish residents first and foremost, and for people like us in the room, for people who have young families, very open, welcoming to, you know, LGBTQ, all sorts of celebrating different genres of music as well, which we can talk about next. For the locals, we want to make it as accessible as possible, so offering a really good reduced early bird rate to them, and welcoming children that are 12 and under within adult. Some of the things that, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, attendance reductions. We want to start small and grow it incrementally for the first four years. We do plan on having about 5,000 to 7,500 in the first year, and going up to a maximum in and around 15,000 by year four, so that it stays within that sweet spot that we felt the first few years that we had the Squamish festival here under those two different companies that we're running it. You know that we would like to use Hendrickson Field. We feel that that is really a beautiful jewel of a place to have such an experience. Those of us who've been there, you know, were able to see that beautiful majestic backdrop of the chief in the background behind the stage and how amazing that looked and really felt. And it's something that we want to embrace and use again. The grounds are all perfect for sort of the vibe that we want to create, that more European feel where people can put blankets down and even put some tarp's down early in the day if they want to stay close to the stage. There'll be some standing and dancing room, of course, but we want to make it an open area for people who can just come and enjoy the music for the day with their families and their friends. And that would also include a site-wide liquor license until sundown as well, so that we really mitigate that feeling of needing to drink as much as you possibly can and get back out to go and see the music and all of that. So, keep it very simple.
Repatriate.
We might be using some of the grounds behind where Lager Sports is for some staging or some little niche areas. And depending on how the laws change this summer with respect to cannabis, we may need to create a more discreet area away from kids and families if that's necessary. So, potentially going in and just creating a little farm offshoot of some sort where there's maybe 19 plus, 21 plus. We don't know. The music is something and the genres that, you know, people are always really interested to know what kind of programming we're going to have. And Tamara and I are super excited about that. As you probably know, Tamara worked for the PEE for many years and was very, very fundamental in the PEE Performance Project. And I'm super passionate about developing artists, and we have so much great talent in B.C., but also beyond that, Canada and throughout the rest of the world. So, really working with musicians that are finding their base. And that can be anywhere from singer-songwriters and folk artists to on the heavier side of things, maybe an indie rocker pop act. But beyond that, we won't be inviting Eminem. That's not what we're going for. Camping's not going to happen. That's just not a part of our plan. This is a day festival. We really do want to create it for Squamish so people can go home at night and sleep in their own beds. And we do know that there will be music tourism that would come out of this, and we welcome that. And I'm, you know, happy to offer the hotels and the short-term vacation rentals, hostels and all of that. But beyond that, we will work very hard, and Kurt will talk about this, in regards to shuttling people to and from Vancouver and Whistler for other accommodations. And that will be the main force of what we want to bring. So, it's not a festival that people will be coming to as a destination festival to get really messed up for the weekend. That's not what this is. We're really excited to build our advisory committee. We've already talked to so many people in the community that have the expertise, some people we've worked with and whatnot, but, you know, can help guide us in some of the things like marketing, just different event production capacities in the music industry and also in logistics. And we're growing that list, and we're really happy to get their guidance to represent the community. I'm going to pass it over to Kurt now, who can talk about some logistics.
Well, thank you, guys, for allowing us to come see you. And the first thing I'm going to talk to you about is poop and the waste management program. But no, not really. We've already spoken to JFL. We've already reached out to them. They seem to have a great program already in place. They've done Squamish Music Festival, they've done the Pendy Fest, they've done other events. So, really, it's an easy fit for us and it's an easy fit for them. They've already done it. So, we are already in discussions, we've already been discussing with them for several months now, and have that pretty much dialed in already for the event. The next thing is, one of the key things that we were going to do and create a legacy with this festival is we want it to be zero waste. We've already spoken again, we've reached out to aware, and we already have plans to implement a recycling program on-site. All vendors are going to have to meet a plastic policy that we will have in place, which is basically no single-use plastics. And we're going to make sure that all, any other materials are combustible, compostable, combustible.
I like the combustible.
Said I wasn't going to screw that up, and I did. Sorry. Another part of this, of having the festival is part of transportation. We really want, reducing the carbon footprint is really key to us. After probably the first year, we're going to be looking at, as the attendance goes up, we're going to be looking at bringing coal lines and shuttle buses from Whistler and Vancouver and implementing that, and at the same time utilizing some of the parking spaces that may be available to us in town. One of the other key things to us is emphasizing the local bike transportation and the really excellent trail systems that we have in town for the locals to utilize. And we will have, like, a long bikes concierge set up and what have you, because as we said in our meetings, you know, all trails seem to lead to Brennan Park. So, it's a no-brainer really in that sense. Another part of having the festival is definitely keeping the wildlife safe, because we've reached out to Wild Safe B.C., and we want to work with Wild Safe B.C. and the District of Squamish to make sure that we implement any of the new biolaws that are apparently coming into play that they're suggesting, making sure that all the organic waste is stored during and in the evenings after the festival. All the food vendors will have to meet these requirements. And another part of working with aware will make sure that, you know, the consumers, people coming to the festival, will be educated through email blast, social media, website up until and during the festival. And we will also have Wild Safe volunteers on and off-site, making sure that the land and the waters are safe and not being harmed. And finally, a big part of having this festival from day one, when we started discussion, was having the ability to give back to the community. As you see, there's a bit of a theme going through here. Our plan is to put an additional surcharge on the tickets that will go directly back to community services in Squamish, such as Helping Hands and Squamish Child and Youth and Mental Health. Being inclusive as well, we want to make sure that we can bring in local schools and organizations to be part of seeing and developing and being part of the infrastructure of the festival. One of the things that we discussed is, you know, maybe getting the high schools involved and building benches for the festival and such. Local businesses, of course, will be given first consideration for services and product contracts. And one of the things that I really think is cool is that we're looking at having an apprenticeship program for local youth where they can come and work with us and develop their skills in event production. And we really want to emphasize young women, First Nations and LGBTQ involved in that process as well. And now I'm going to pass it on to Kat.
Thanks, Kurt. So, just wrapping up a lot of what we've already said into our economic impact, we're really looking at the economic impact as more than just the money that's spent in the festival grounds on the day of the festival. So, everyone that we are looking to employ, from the vendors that are on-site selling their art or their artisan wares, to the people that are working with us to put on the festival, to the fencing company, to, you know, Carney's, to just putting all of that money as much as possible back into Squamish. And then something that we're really, really excited about is satellite events. So, the festival will end at 10 or 11 each night, which gives us the opportunity to push all of our attendees into Squamish. And so, we'll work with places like the Naughty Girl or all the bars and restaurants to have these after events that are maybe not quite so family-friendly. You can go drop off your kids and then go out for a night in Squamish. So, really working with the town to make sure that we're not just raising money for us or, you know, the people that are on-site, but really pushing people into the town. And then last on that is, as we already said, we think with no camping, we're really supporting the hotels, the hostels, the whole accommodation industry. And then from the Canadian Chamber of Commerce Music Cities Toolkit, we found this quote that really summed up a lot of why we think that this is super important to bring back to Squamish, which is, "A strong music community has been proven to attract other industrial investment along with talented young workers who put a high value on quality of life no matter their profession." As we've seen with festivals in the past, we believe that this is great for job creation, economic growth, the city brand building, artistic growth, and then, as we said, some tourism as well, especially in further years. Moving on to more the financial side of everything, this slide really feeds into the next one, but it just shows you kind of everything that we've thought of in the process of coming up with our revenue and expense assumptions. But the thing I really want to point you to here is the locals' ticket price, which we believe we want to keep as affordable as possible. So, you can see it starts, and these aren't final ticket prices. We are working with someone who does a bunch of festivals in the region to really nail down the right ticket prices, but we hope to do as low as $99 for the full weekend for locals. Moving into our budget, you can see here as well that our gross income is higher than our total expense. And then concentrating more on the expense side, these are very real expenses. We have a lot of quotes from R C and P, from Carney's, our fencing, our insurance, aware, all of those have been baked in here from quotes that we already have. And then also from the music festivals that I've worked with in the past, using that data and then pulling that in to have very real understanding of what this could be. And then pulling your attention to the $35,000 contingency plan, because things always come up that you're not expecting, and we want to make sure that we're as financially responsible as possible. And with that, I will give it back to Tamara.
Yeah, so one of the things about working with the radio station is that we were approached by almost every municipality on the lower mainland, you know, from Richmond, White Rock, Burnaby, New West, North Van, West Van, Whistler, sorry, all of them, all of the municipalities had actually developed their own festivals and the municipalities were paying for them. And there were various reasons for that. It just really helps stimulate the economic conditions within the community, but it also really helps build a sense of community. And we know that is not the case here, because we know that, you know, there isn't that kind of funding for a festival. And that's why we are taking it on ourselves in, you know, us four directors taking all the risk really and doing it. And so, really what we're asking for is cooperation with all of you to help us make it come together, possibly some leniency in cases, but always with the underlying idea that we respect everything about Squamish and care so deeply about it, that we just want to make it a festival that's comfortable and good for everybody, and that we could be essentially partners with you just giving us acceptance. And that's pretty much it. And we just wanted to thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I know you've been working hard on this for probably a year and a half.
Year.
Yeah. I know the idea germinated quite a while ago. It takes a while to get all the pieces in order, but you've got, looks apparently a really great team together to deliver on this. Going to go to council for any questions about the festival, any questions about the information that's been up there?
Thank you. Is this more or less the size of Folk Festival in Vancouver?
Yes.
I'm just trying to get my head around, single stage, non-local stage?
There will be the opportunity to grow into another stage for sure, but we're starting with a single stage. And even growing into another stage, it will be a side, smaller stage, much like what the Folk Fest does have still, where they have sort of those little...
Workshops.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, the idea is not to have a competing, like, constant entertainment, boom, 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 with, like, big acts the whole time. That's, yeah.
Go ahead.
And I guess, forgive me for asking, it's your festival, not mine, but $190,000 for talent, is that all? Can you do it for that?
That's just the first year.
That's the first year, for sure. And what we're drawing on is a really underutilized pool of exceptional talent that hasn't really, well, they just don't charge that much yet because they don't know how good they are. So, we're going to use them in a very positive way.
This is public meeting.
No, they like it. But yeah, it is a really conservative talent budget that we've got for the first year just because...
We're starting.
We're starting.
Yeah, yeah. And we have a lot of friends that really want to do this with us. And they've all, not all, but many artists have expressed interest. And, you know, we're walking that fine line, like, no, we want to pay you. No, we want to pay you, so...
Yeah, we're calling in favors really is what we're doing in the first, in the first few years.
But it's, we've got budgets built out for four years, and they definitely grow.
Counselor.
I was just looking for a line, I mean, showing the cost of the fields and that. Are we donating the fields?
No.
No, it's part of the budget. It's involved.
You don't have our complete budget.
It's hooked into the production line.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just reading where districts sometimes support and...
Any other questions for our donation? I don't see any. I think this is fantastic. I, those first one or two years of the Squamish Music Festival were really, I think, in my mind, the best.
That's exactly what they call it.
It was about 12,000 people the first year-ish, and I think at that sweet spot of 15, maybe even push it to 16, 17, is really where sort of the threshold of what we can absorb in the community and the threshold of what that site takes without bringing in terms of camping and all that sort of thing. So, I think that's really reason, I love the idea of the satellite. We always said that to Paul, too. It's like, why don't you have something here and there? It just wasn't part of their vision, but it's part of your vision, so I think that's fantastic. The other thing that gives me confidence is that you guys are all locals. You have neighbors.
We've said that. We have to face them, and that's fair.
So, I know from that point of view, it will be respectful and sensitive and done with collaboration and open ears and all that sort of thing. So, at this point, I think there's nothing for council to decide, other than we've already said that staff could explore leasing the properties with you, so we've already done that, just in terms of, yeah, go ahead and talk with these guys and negotiate. So, unless I see another question or comment from anybody, I would say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
And we look forward to seeing this roll out. When, you know, for sure if you're going to have a festival next year, like, when is sort of your...
Now.
Now, this is it. Yeah, we're just waiting for your approval and then moving. Like, as soon as we get it, then that is, that is sort of our go.
And then in terms of the lineup and selling tickets, that'll probably come...
Not till the new year.
Yeah, 2018.
Right, right.
Okay. I guess, just a question for staff. Do you see any impediments at this point?
When the proponents approached us with their ideal date, we looked at the calendar, we went out to the various departments within the district to ask for feedback, and although it's, it's a workable date within the constraints that have been presented to us.
It was the most challenging part. I think that this whole process is trying to find a date that worked in the community because it's busy.
And you don't want to step on other people's toes. You want to make sure that we're sensitive to that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have another delegation on Garibaldi at Squamish, master plan. We have Rod McLeod at his crew. I did notice that Director Wingo from the SOD came in, so if you'd like to join this company, come on up. Welcome. If you need more chairs, you can... Why don't we take a two-minute recess? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Mayor of the Council. My name is Jim Chu. I'm with the Aquiline Group, and this afternoon, we're going to give you an update on a project that we believe is a very exciting resort project for the See the Sky Corridor, especially the community of Squamish. I've got several colleagues with me here today. On my left is Stuart Jones from IBI. Stuart is our resort planner. He worked very closely with the S.E. group, Snow Engineering, who are based in the United States, have done ski resorts all over North America, as Stuart has. And also with me is Rod McLeod, who's our vice president for planning for the Garibaldi Squamish Resort Project. Also in the audience, a couple of people that are helping us, or three people, Gori Addison, a local resident, as you and we know, Janice Brown, who's been with the project for a long time, and has our historical record of past activities, and Tristan Moody, who's also on our team. I guess we'll start off with the first slide, which you can see above you, Brom Ridge, where the resort will be located. And there's some simulated ski, or chairlifts up there, but they're not up there yet. And one thing I will open with by noting is that there's a blank before Mount Bresser. And that's because we do have a draft plan. We do have a tentative name, which is Garibaldi at Squamish, but we're now coming to city council, we're coming to the community, and asking for input on how we can make our plan better so that it meets the needs and desires of the community that we want to serve. So, even the mountain name is up for grabs in terms of what the community input comes to us and what people want us to call the resort from this forward point forward. By way of background, I mentioned I'm with the Aquiline Group, and we're the main proponents of the resort. There are some minority shareholders, specifically Northern Properties, which is Bob Galardi. Aquiline, with the majority share of the partnership, have been leading the project the last few years. We're very diversified. You probably know we have ownership of the Vancouver Canucks. We do property development. In fact, we're quite well-known for partnerships with First Nations, very strong partnerships in Tawas and Musqueam and Salatu right now. We are partners also with the Squamish Nation in this particular resort proposal. We're diversified into agriculture as well as hospitality, hotels across Canada, and the top-table restaurant group. So, if you're in Whistler, you visit the Rax here, Cabanetto, or any of the other restaurants are also, but enough of a plug for our restaurants. I'll just move on to a little bit about where we are. As I mentioned, we want to get input from the community and council, so one of our first stops is here with Squamish District Squamish Council. We have received the approval to have an interim agreement to have jurisdiction over the mountain, which enables us to go up to the mountain and do some research, examine it, and propose the resort. We were successful in receiving the environmental certificate in January of 2016, and that's probably the biggest achievement that we've been able to make in probably the 25 years the project has been around. And quite frankly, as many of you know, the project has run into financial difficulties in the past. That's not an issue right now, because, as I mentioned, the Aquiline Group and Northern Properties are behind it. By the way, Bob Galardi owns homes of Dallas Stars in NHL, so you can see the well-resourcer with the salmon loop and the other diverse holdings. We are, you know, we are going to present to you elements of the resort master plan shortly. And just by way of a further introductory slide, as I mentioned, we did get the EA certificate. One of the ways we were able to get that was to reduce the footprint of the resort. It's smaller now. It's not encroaching on Cat Lake or Brom Lake. And we've also, of course, had to go through extensive consultation, and we've got 40 environmental conditions that we have to meet. And that holds our feet to the fire to ensure that the environment is protected with this resort. And the last slide I'll cover is just quickly the location, which I think everybody in this room is likely familiar with, 13 minutes north of Squamish, downtown Squamish. We kind of use this analogy of how big it will be, and we compare it with Cypress and Vale Resorts Whistler Latcom. You know, halfway in between those two resorts, that also applies to the footprint, the size of the resort, and that actually also applies to the snow levels. You don't get as much snow as Cypress, but we get more than Vale Resorts, and we've got some research that backs that up. Anyways, for more details on the project, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Rod and Stuart.
Thanks, Jim. So, my name is Rod McLeod. Sat around this table with you folks many times. Brief, brief history, I've worked, out of my time working here, I've worked in this business for all my life, starting when I was 15 as my weekend job for a pass. And I've worked all over North America doing construction projects and all over the world. Stuart Jones is our planner. I'll let him do his two-minute bio, and then we're going to kind of tag team through some of the details here.
So, I'm with IBI. We're a company, planning, architecture, engineering company in Vancouver. I started my career in Whistler for S.E. group, Snow Engineering, so designing ski resorts really around the world and worked for them for 15 years. And then about 15 years ago, came to IBI, and we continue to do that work. And IBI, my company, and S.E. are partners in terms of the planning of Garibaldi, in terms of the lifts and the trails, the homes, the... terms of the lifts and the trails, the homes, the roads and so forth. We've collaborated and put that together.
So this shows the overall project. So this conceptual master plan that we're working on is at the request of the ministry. The Mountain Resorts Branch is a part of Forest Lands Natural Resources Operations. They control and manage all mountain resorts in B.C., as the name implies. And they've asked us to do an update to the conceptual master plan, given the timeframe since the last one. So the part, this is the first public introduction of the new plan, new updated plan. And one of the things that's required of that process is to get the agreement in principle from whichever local government will be looking after the resort, be overseeing the resort. So that's not, we're not asking for a decision, or it is, it's just for input today from us to you, and then from you to us. So this meets all the criteria of MRB for a destination resort. There's local resorts, regional resorts, and destination. It meets all the criteria. Everything is in balance, and we're going to talk more about phasing, but the balance is important, because the uphill capacity, the downhill capacity, and the accommodation all has to be in balance and with ministry guidelines. And the resort complements other recreation in the Sea to Sky Corridor. You know, we've got Whistler Blackcomb, we've got the Sea to Sky Gondola, we've got Cypress, and all of it close to a major airport and close to a major population center.
Want to add to that? Yeah, I mean, I think the slide in front of you, it kind of represents, or talks about the fact, just underscore it. Rob said the application process, the way we go through the resort planning process is, I guess, governed by the provincial government, and they have quite a strict set of criteria, a binder about that thick, relating to making sure basically that, well, a couple of things. One, that the environment's protected. Number two, that the sort of the economics and social aspects are protected. So quite straight criteria about having a balance of lift capacity versus overnight capacity, and a whole other set of criteria. So this is how, what kind of our rulebook for how the resort is designed.
And I think the one in the bottom right, the perform and reward, is actually the wording that's used in the MRB. You build mountain recreation, and you then can build accommodation. So you don't do the second part without having the first part done and proven to be successful. So related to that, this is our proposed phasing. And this is really key. People look at the bottom number there, 21,000 beds and 17,000 people on the hill. But you go back to the first slide, it's a really good small resort in phase one. Phase one is five years. So it, if we get, when we get approval from the MRB to start with phase one, we will be judged, and we have to report to them every year on how the operation is going and what's happening. If we get towards the end of five years and phase one is successful, in other words, there's lots of skiers and snowboarders and mountain bikers and hikers coming to the mountain, they'll allow us to go to phase two. They won't allow us to go to phase two until it's proven successful. So we don't know. We've got this plan that says how big the resort is going to get, but the market is going to determine how big it actually gets, the success. So we've got to do a really good job of every part of the resort in phase one in order to attract people and get people to come out.
Can I ask just a quick question on that? How long do you get to prove out your success on phase one? Like, do they say within five years or 10 years?
The, each of these is a five-year phase, but if it's, it's not like you have to do something in year four. If, this phase one could take longer.
No, so what I'm saying is, you build phase one, you've built out phase one, and maybe I got this wrong, and then you get, you have to prove that phase one has been successful.
Right.
How long do you get to prove that? I mean, it'll be tough to prove it in one year. I'm just curious if, you know.
I'm not sure.
Like, at what point do they determine?
Right.
Is it just numbers?
Right.
Did you give you a certain amount of time?
Well, you make application for, so like, for instance, make application for additional lifts or bed units. So that application is evaluated at that time. So then the ministry has all the records of past performance.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay. So one of the things that we're talking about here for this resort is the cluster idea, again, the fact that we have several resorts and recreational things here. So this is a picture of Salt Lake City and Park City. Stuart and I have both worked separate times in Park City area and know how successful it is. There's this many lifts that are close to, close to Park City. So that's going to be, I think, part of our success is going forward, is that you get a critical mass here of us added into the mix of everybody else. It's worked in the Okanagan. The Okanagan has 26 lifts. In this picture, Salt Lake City has about 115. In our, in this area, there's potential with, Whistler's got potential for 11 more lifts over what they've got. With our proposed lifts that build out, there could be a total of 75 lifts in this area, in this corridor.
So what did you say, Vale?
Summit County in total is 140. Oh, sorry, Vale being Whistler or Vale being?
No, Vale being this, or, sorry, the Salt Lake.
Oh, Park City. So Park City area, Salt Lake City is 115 in this picture.
I think what's really interesting is, you know, Garibaldi will absolutely appeal to locals, for sure. It will appeal to people from Vancouver, but I think the point, you know, Rod's making in this slide is that it will also appeal to the destination market as one choice in a cluster of resorts. And, you know, some of his examples, I mean, and you can look further, you can look to Banff with the three ski resorts there. And what happens is that attracts then a destination market. And certainly, Whistler Blackcomb has a destination market now, but I think there's room for that even to grow and to just to start to attract, for instance, China or other markets, where people, people from the U.K. will be looking at the Sea to Sky Resort Corridor and determining, are they going to Europe this year or to Vancouver, into the Sea to Sky Corridor? So I think, and I don't think, I don't think this resort at Squamish would be the same at all as Whistler Blackcomb. It would definitely have more of a local, more boutique, or smaller character, but if you're here for a week, it would definitely be on your list to try it out, be part of the, part of the draw.
And there are a whole bunch of scientific studies done. If you go on any scholar, Google Scholar, or Eupucoller, or any of those things in Google Cluster, you'll find a whole bunch of scientific studies that prove that this works, whether it's for recreation, or business parks, or agriculture, or whatever. This is a proven phenomenon. So this is Canada, Western Canada, the last little over 10 years. Been lots of discussion about what's happening with the market. It's certainly been good for the last three years, and this year isn't on here yet, but it'll be just as good. Some of that is good snow years, some of it's the dollar difference, a lot of it going forward, and Stuart mentioned it, but China is building a whole bunch of ski resorts for the 2020 Olympics. And part of their intention is growing their middle class. And so B.C. as a whole, and Western North America, a little bigger picture, is looking for that market as helping us going forward.
Yeah, so, I mean, this chart shows the sort of ideal distribution of trail network that the MRB gauges be sort of an ideal distribution of beginner all the way through expert terrain. And you can see the darker bar showing, or, I'm sorry, the lighter bar showing, darker bar being the sort of ideal, if you will, the lighter bars being the Garibaldi terrain blend. This is about as good as it gets. Like, it's a very, very nice spread of trailability levels. Most of it you can see is kind of in that intermediate zone, where the biggest chunk of the skier market is. And certainly, what, you know, our planning at this point is still fairly high level. There will be much more detailed studies to come, and we probably can tweak that and refine it and get it even closer to the market.
So this is quite interesting. The, there's this idea that this is a huge resort. Here's where it sits, sort of in the midst of other B.C. resorts. So these numbers are from other areas' master plans, and it's what's been approved for them going forward. So Sun Peaks is about half that size right now, but they have approval to expand to 720 hectares of trails. Whistler, the 1925 number for Whistler is the, again, the actual planning number. They advertise and talk about 3,000 hectares. That includes all the open bowls and all the glades and all those kind of things that aren't factored in. So we're in the middle. It's, we're in the, we're the Goldilocks resort. Not too big, not too small. So this is the backside, the.
Can I just get a pair of case files on the last slide? You said that with all the glades and bowls, this is closer to 3,000.
Yes.
Does the 622 number include glades?
No. All of these numbers are intended to be actual trails from their master plans. So I've.
This one, yeah, just.
Yeah. I've given Melissa actually both this presentation, the conceptual master plan electronically, and a link to the MRB site, so that she can get it out to you, so you can all look at it electronically. If you're ever bored, they have, on their site, they have every resort in B.C. that has a master plan, and you can go in and look at the plans.
So if you included the glades and open areas from this?
Yep.
What would Garibaldi at Squamish's number be?
Could be double. Our total, our total controlled recreation area is going to be about 2,600 hectares, but that includes a huge amount of areas left as forest, and then the base areas, the accommodation areas. So it could be considerably more. And I guess this, this picture actually shows a little bit more of that. So the marked ski runs that are on this picture are what we were talking about, whereas the treat areas is not, right? And the trees there are probably ski-able. This, the, the top part of this, this hill is where the restaurant is. The lift, the lift that comes down that we're looking at, Lift P, is as big and as steep as anything on Whistler Blackcomb, and it's north-facing, and it's going to be great. It's where everybody's going to go to from Squamish on their, on those days when you're seeking out a work on a Thursday and it snowed overnight. It's going to be great. There's two other lifts that are as big and steep as anything on Whistler Blackcomb, and that, and there's a lot of area in the Alpine also.
Maybe just another thing to point out in this slide, so you can see a restaurant at the top peak, so that is directly serviced by a gondola from the village. So it does make the Alpine accessible, much like you have in Whistler, where people can get on a gondola in, you know, sheltered from the weather, and make it all the way up to a restaurant, partake in either skiing or other activities that are up in the Alpine, whether it's mountain biking or these kinds of things.
So this is a comparison of elevations. The main village, about 1,037 meters, the same as the top of the Gross Sky Ride, or mid-mountain on the Whistler Village gondola. The south base is about the same as Whistler Village, and the upper base is about the same as the bottom of our Garbanzo Chair, and the top is about the same as the rent house. So it's, the bulk of the first two phases are up well into the snow zone, and quite, you know, a long ways up the mountain. So the road to the main village will be similar to the Cypress Road or Seymour Road, which those of you that are road bikers will probably learn to love. The other thing, the, the main chairlift out of the, or the gondola of the main village that Stuart just mentioned, that would be built first. That would be the first lift built. So right from the beginning, we would be open for the full gamut of activities year-round. So lots of discussion about snow. This is the chalet, the original chalet that's used by the Snow Wheel Club, one picture in the summer, one in April. And we've been up there taking snow studies and snow samples. So again, this is at 1,400 meters. There's, this is still about halfway up the hill. Lots of snow.
How many years of snow studies do you have now?
We've got 20 years that were done, that have been done previously, comparing Whistler and comparing Cypress, and then using Diamond Head as the.
You know, onsite?
Onsite. Just the two years that we've been going up there and taking snow samples.
And what about visibility?
Haven't been up there every day. What we are doing, this picture, from this picture to the trees at the end of the cabin is about 50 meters, and there's not many days where you can't see those trees. So 50 meters makes it very ski-able. Jim mentioned that in just about every way, this is between Cypress and Whistler. So there's going to be good days, there's going to be some bad days, but it's.
But you're not collecting the data on that yet?
No. Visibility's really hard to collect unless you get up there every day, and Jim won't let me do that yet.
Most towns have webcams?
Yeah, well, we've, this is the webcam that we're using, so.
Okay, you look at it.
Yeah.
So while this is a public webcam, we don't have infrastructure up there yet.
So this is a rendering of the main village.
Yeah, sure. So there are really three base areas or portals where people can access the mountain. It's where most of the accommodation, whether it's hotels or privately-owned residences, would be clustered. And this is one of those three. So it's the main village. It's, would have pretty much all of the commercial, the restaurants and so forth would be consolidated in the village. Quite a bit smaller in scale from Whistler, maybe more of a comparison, might be a Silver Star scale, just to give you some, some sense of size. The beautiful slopes coming into the village. Jim talked about the gondola that would come in and out of the village, up to the mountaintop. Lots of other really nice fall line skiing to the village. Most have been north-facing, so a really nice place to be. And you can actually, from the village, just barely get glimpses down all the way to the, to the house house. It's really quite nice.
And this will be the hub of all activities to start with, at least. There'll be a tubing park here, a snow tubing park here. Mountain bike trails will come in and out of here. There'll be an adventure desk in here that people can book, you know, rafting on the river, or kayaking in the ocean, or other, other type adventures. So this is just a couple of the, in the conceptual master plan, there's several pages of possible activities that people could do, and that have been successful at other resorts. The coaster on the top right there, Revelstoke, has been one of the huge hits. It is just, it's really, really busy. We know we're going to have sports camps for kids of all ages, and we know that snowshoe, the bike trails in the summer can be snowshoe trails in the winter. There'll be a lot of free places to go and do things, too. And think of Whistler and the Lost Lake Trails, they're all free. Anybody can go up there and go mountain biking around Lost Lake, or go, you know, snowshoeing around, and so.
Well, just, just to carve the same time.
Okay.
Busy schedule, just want to make sure we get there.
We're getting close. Again, mountain biking, lots of, lots of options for mountain biking. The, the mountain bike tourism study done for this region. The, the mountain bike tourism study done for this region in 2016, we went from $3 million to $10 million in 10 years. Whistler was at 59 million. So the potential for Squamish with lift service mountain biking is to rival Whistler in the value of, of mountain biking.
Yeah, so, so I spoke a little bit about the main village. I think the takeaway on this slide is more about the breadth of accommodation throughout the entire resort and the fact that, that again, MRB, the Mountain Resorts Branch, regulates the blend of accommodation we can offer. We can't, for instance, just put single family homes up there. They would, because we would be classified as a, as a destination resort, they would be looking for a certain ratio of hotel beds and other rentable overnight accommodation. So there's quite strict criteria for that. And so at each phase, you would see, you would need to meet that criteria and have a, over 50% of the beds would need to be rentable, essentially hotel beds.
Another interesting thing this is that the, the employee housing has to be a huge part of this resort's success. So MRB requires between 10 and 20% and we are, we're probably going to have to offer more than that in the way of employee housing.
Just stay on that picture for a second. I think the picture looks deceptively flat. So can you just give me an understanding of what the elevation would be from the village to the crest of where the lift is? And maybe the distance too, just so, because I don't think that picture.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So from the village to the summit restaurant is about 709 vertical meters and you can, it's sort of just at the very top in the background on this picture.
Oh, okay, so.
The, the Whistler Village gondola from midstation to the restaurant is eight, a little over 800 meters. So we're just a little smaller than that, that point from the Whistler Village midpoint up. The, the slopes that are coming in from right to left are quite steep and north facing. It could be good skiing. It's about probably 300 or 400 meters to the, to the skyline on the right side, which again is a, you know, the, the Emerald Chair on Whistler is, is 500 meters. So those are all by themselves.
So that's two and a half kilometers-ish.
Of?
From the village to the.
Distance?
What, you said 20?
Sorry, no, sorry, we're in vertical meters.
You did vertical.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. And here will also be underground parking and a bus service will run from Squamish to, to service the, the main village and the other, both for staff and for, for guests. So this is kind of from the same spot and part of the story here shows this whole area has been logged. All three of the base areas, the proposed base areas and villages are in previously logged areas. You can see the logging, the line of the logging goes way up the mountain there. We've also preserved, there were two areas, one on the right horizon and one on the left horizon that were proposed to be logged by B C G M sales and we've negotiated with them to not have those logged. So only the area in the top left there, the 14, the 15% and the 4% are areas that will remain disturbed. 56% will not get touched at all. Might have a bike trail through it or something like that, but it, it is left as forest. And then 24%, 25% is what the ski runs. So the ski runs get cut and graded and then replanted and back to looking like a park. And that, that's one of our, one of our key things, this area has got to look and feel like a park to people that are coming up here, otherwise they won't come back, right? So it's got to look and feel good. We will be ongoing reporting to local governments, provincial governments and to the Squamish Nation as part of the EA commitments. And there is a ton of scientific studies that have to be done to establish the baseline. For instance, what, what the Broome River aquatic area looks like now and then it gets monitored and reported on as, as we open. And that'll also determine how much expansion happens and what, if there's further remediation required.
I think a third question. Is this the full building, over 80% of the land will remain?
Yes.
After phase four?
Yeah.
It's still 80%.
Yeah. I mean, you look at, look at the picture of the ski run, you've got a ski run and then beside it, you've got two big chunks of forest, right? I mean, it's, yeah.
So I'm just trying to, this is undisturbed land, 56, so you're including the trails and the, and the ski runs as part of the 80%?
Yeah, the 20, the 24% is what could be hiking trails, biking trails, ski runs, which are often the same thing.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. So again, a picture from downtown showing where the resort is. So a lot of economic benefit for, for Squamish. The current workforce in Squamish that commutes is going to be able to work at home and stay here. There's a lot of Whistler Blackcomb staff, Whistler Resort staff that commute. There's a lot of people that commute to Vancouver that are accountants or, or tradespeople. We have, we have, our community has a whole bunch of people that live in Squamish that work in the arena or that could all stay home and work here or are in construction that could stay and work here. Another picture from Urin Park of where the resort is, just for awareness purposes. And again, people will be able to stay and recreate at home. They won't have to be driving to Whistler or Cypress to ski or to Whistler to go lift service mountain biking. Local governance is kind of what we, we are working towards here, what that is going to look like. And so we'd like you to think about that and we'll talk some more and decide whether we try and come back in the next little while or whether you want to get into more details and we set up a workshop type session or where we go from, from here. This picture shows just how close it is to the main part of Squamish.
So thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. I know there might be some more questions. I just want to introduce a couple of other guests that are with our team right now. Over to my left is Counselor Richie Baker from Squamish Nation.
Oh, he's not in.
And I think many of you know Gene Dale Harry, who is here as well, our partner from Squamish Nation. So.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I have Counselor Race and Counselor Kent. That's your question.
Thank you. I'm curious about the timeline for the regulatory process, when you would want to apply for O C P amendments or rezoning. And the second part of that is, would you consider rezoning by phase or would you look for one initial rezoning for the entire project?
For timing, we've got a couple of years of provincial regulatory stuff to go through. The process of this conceptual plan going in, finalizing the master plan and then doing a master development agreement. The master development agreement is kind of like a subarea plan. It's not, but it, it sets out what happens and what order it happens in. I don't know the answer to the rezoning question, whether we would do.
You may not know that today.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's early. I think we'd want to work, if, if we were part of Squamish, we'd need to work with staff to figure out, well, you mentioned subarea plan or neighborhood plan. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure what that would be. Again, if Squamish is, decides to extend the boundaries, then Squamish will have a lot of say in how that happens and what happens. And if Squamish doesn't, then it'll be over to the regional district with Squamish having some say.
That's how it works.
So the follow-up and that is then before an O C P application comes in, I guess we have to figure out the governance.
Yes, definitely.
Somebody has to decide what's, and has the province taken position?
The province says we have to have the support of whichever local government is managing, is looking after the resort. They left it blank.
Currently, the governance is with the S L R D.
Yes.
Should Squamish choose to extend the boundaries, it would be ours. But currently, it is the S L R D.
It's currently the S L R D, yeah.
Counselor Kent?
I have a bit of a sort of tripartite question and I don't know how much detail you can go into on this, but it's about the infrastructure that's planned for the site. And let's start just rudimentary, phase one with 6,000 beds and we'll leave the 17, sorry, the 21,000 beds aside for a moment. What do you propose to use for your aquifer to draw?
We have approval from the environmental assessment office to take water out of the Paradise Valley aquifer. So that is approved. There are six conditions that go with that. So we've, we've done one test well and one pump test. We have to do a whole bunch more pump testing. We have to drill some other wells to monitor what the aquifer is like in a bigger area. We have to do tests on Swift Creek to see what its flow is and how it's affected in the summertime and, and then we have to do some pump testing and see what the reaction is to neighbors' wells. And if neighbors' wells are affected, we have to drill the manure through the well. So it's not a slam dunk. It's a, it's a first step in that, but that's what's approved. We also have to do, one of the conditions is to have a secondary source of water. So we're working right now with our geotechnical people to look on the mountain and see where we could drill wells on the mountain and potentially get water for this secondary source that could also potentially serve as a, as a water source, but that would require an amendment to the environmental assessment certificate.
A large concern for me. Other question. So as far as infrastructure goes, again, wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
How do you propose to deal with that? And I'm kind of asking, I mean, it would be almost impossible. You sort of have to build your wastewater treatment plant there to service the eventuality of 2,100 beds, 21,000 beds. It's not something you'd really want to be updating on a regular basis.
You can, you can build it modular so that it's expandable. What we have to do is, one of the conditions of the environmental certificate is we have to do a liquid waste management plan. So Squamish did one three, four years ago and that's what resulted in the U B system that's currently just, you know, in place. So, and that's a public process. We'd be sitting down with your staff and with yourselves, with the Squamish Nation, with other governments and figure out what, what that will look like. So that's a commitment that's been made and a condition that's been put on us, that we will have to do that. That's about a two-year process. So we don't know what the answer is, but it will be robust. We've committed to the Squamish Nation at our meeting with them a couple of weeks ago that we will, that it will be the highest and best level of treatment possible. We will not be putting untreated sewage into any of, any of the rivers.
And your landfill, I imagine, within your Squamish landfill?
Same, same answer. It's, we have to do a solid waste management plan that fits in with the regional district's solid waste management plan and Squamish will have a lot of say in that. A bunch of the conditions require consultation with the district of Squamish, whether you're our local government or whether you're in an adjacent municipality. So you folks will have a lot of say in what happens.
And a lot of say also goes to Squamish Nation.
Yeah.
And we met with them and we want to combine their centuries' knowledge of protecting the environment with modern science.
Counselor Kent?
Yeah, thanks. So a fair bit of work to do yet. I was just thinking about, do you have a preference as to whether Squamish pulls you into their boundaries?
Okay.
Well, that would be up to the next stage of our consultation with the community. We're not sure right now because there's also the possibility of being our own standalone resort municipality. And then.
Although the provincial government has consistently said that they shouldn't do that.
They, they don't like.
They consistently said both this government.
And so we are, we are going to listen to the community. We're starting this Sunday at the street market.
Yeah.
We will, we have a booth there. We want to hear what people say and, and write down what they say and listen to what they say and then it'll be part of, when we come back to you, we'll have some, have that input.
What a process and 20 something years later. So on the all-season resort, I know we talk about ski hill here, but that's only half the year.
Yeah.
What kind of revenue is that? Is that like 50%? It's going to be 50% of ski hill and 50% in all-weather or summer or spring mountain biking thing? Is it, you know, like?
Most, most mountain resorts are primarily ski, snowboard revenue, winter revenue. The difference with us is we're going to plan this from the beginning as a year-round resort and the mountain biking, the hiking, the other stuff is going to be just, it's, it's got to work. It's going to be integral to the success of the place right from the beginning. So it'll be planned in.
So all of those trails would hook up with downtown, basically. What about Whistler? Do you have a trail connection to Whistler? Someone said that you can take a snowmobile from Garibaldi to Squamish to Whistler.
Got to go through the park.
If you can, because you can go through Garibaldi for which part?
You can't though.
Not on a snowfield.
No, part of our.
You can ski it.
Part of, one of the commitments in the EA is for us to work with the recreation community, especially the, the recreation trails people of Flynnra. And we've been doing that. We've met with those guys a bunch of times to talk about how we're going to work together.
It's kind of early for all these questions anyway, but, and the transportation, I mean, it seems to me the last time that you fellows were in here, you had guests would leave their car at the bottom of the hill and bus up. Is that still the plan?
We have, we have to do an updated transportation plan that, that will have to meet, that will have to be part of, sorry, your transportation plans will have to be factored in to that, whether, again, whether you're part of, whether you're the government authority or not, as well as Ministry of Transport. We're, again, we're committed to having a bus from town up to there on a regular basis and we're committed to working with the regional transportation plan so that we don't have so many cars up there and we don't have so many cars on the highway. So that's a plan to be developed in the future.
Yeah. And then the, well, I guess then the socio-economical survey that was done a few years ago.
Yeah.
$250,000 study.
No, it was $60,000.
That'll have to be updated.
I don't know whether it will have to be or not. I mean, the ministry, the two ministers in their letters acknowledged that socioeconomic studies for resorts are difficult to do. So we need to do some more stuff for our own planning. We've updated our pro forma on, you know, what the costs are going to be and what the potential revenue is going to be. You're right, we probably have to do some more work for, for the, for Squamish if Squamish one becomes the, the governing authority.
Yeah. And then I guess finally, I got a letter from staff, our last letter, I guess, that we sent to you guys.
To the environmental assessment.
To the environmental assessment. Had a whole list of things.
Yeah.
Because there were some, you touched on a few of those things in the letter. Well, it's a journey.
It's a journey.
Yeah.
Thanks. I've got a couple of speakers. There's lots of people in the audience, so if you do want to ask a question of the opponents, please just put your hand up and we'll ask you to join us. But just want to remind everyone, this is sort of Garibaldi Squamish presenting their plan to the community. This is sort of the beginning of.
Yes.
Of revealing this and getting public input. So there's no decision sometime else for the day.
Not requesting any decision. And again, we will be out in these community markets, the street markets. And so if anybody wants to talk details with us, come and see us there. We'll have all the plans, all the stuff we can sit and go and figure out where the fire heavens are going to go if we want to.
Thanks. I have Counselor Kent, Counselor Race and then Counselor.
Thanks. My concern was the aquifer as well. I was interested in the water supply, so I am still, that is my major concern is ensuring proper.
And I'm meeting tonight with the Paradise Valley folks. I've been meeting with them regularly. Basically that's, after we do this update, I'm going to give this update to them and we're keeping talking to them.
During the EA process, we had a consultant from Pito who worked with us to determine the water levels in that aquifer. And we also hired on behalf of the Paradise Valley Community Association, another water specialist who represented that community. And their conclusions were consistent that there wasn't sufficient water for the resort. But our consultant said, if you run out of water in the western world, this is where you want to be.
I'm not sure that gives us any assurance, but as Rob articulated, it was one study four years ago now, five years ago now, it had to be cut short because of weather and those couple of things. So you indicated that you have to do quite a bit more analysis.
A lot more.
Yeah.
And again, I put the, the conditions, I've, I've left Melissa with, in, in the, the slide deck I've given her is, is the actual, all 40 of the conditions. And again, somebody's really bored, one even can't sleep, they make wonderful meetings.
And I believe you indicated to me you could explore actually other water sources as well as part of this.
We could, and we are. But this is the one that's approved right now.
In the environmental assessment, so any changes would require an amendment to the certificate of consent?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Counselor Reese, then Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. One of the concerns you've probably heard is with respect to the highway capacity. And I don't know about other areas where there's clusters, whether there's multiple access, but here we've just got the one, as you know. And you both also know, as somebody who's used it, that there are times when it gets very busy with tourism traffic. Have you had any discussions with the province about if something like this went ahead, about clearing up some of the choke points in the highway? There's some pinch points that I think are pretty obvious if you drive around on a Sunday afternoon or even a Friday evening sometimes.
Nothing in detail. We, again, one of the conditions is that we update a traffic study that would identify some areas that are issues, both locally, how we're going to manage traffic locally and how we're going to be part of a solution on the highway. So, I mean, we collectively, us, Whistler, you know, Whistler Mountain, Whistler Blackcomb, and Whistler Village, we've got to get more cars off the highway somehow. So we are going to commit to working on that solution. We're not going to have a solution on our own, but we're going to work together, everybody else to come up with a solution for that, whether it's the train or the boat or, you know, more buses, I don't know.
We're projecting $50 million a year in additional task revenue for the government, so to fix those choke points, there is a revenue funding source that they can look at.
Thanks. Counselor Elliott, and I have Director Rainbow.
Thank you. So you mentioned earlier that creating another municipality was an option. Is that something that you're pursuing?
No, we're right now looking to talk to the community, figure out the best way to govern this that works over everybody. So certainly there's options, but we don't have one that's preferred right now.
So you're not pursuing that with the province?
We're not pursuing that right now.
And then our letter to the EA had a number of outstanding issues, and I'm wondering when those will be addressed.
A bunch of them were addressed in the EA. A bunch of those made it into the, into the certificate as conditions, both from, you know, from the community in general, but also in there. Again, that's something, if we want to sit down with counsel in a workshop, we could go through those in more detail. That would be like several hours of detailed discussion, or one-on-one.
Probably first thing first, actually, sit down with staff and go through them.
Okay.
And then...
So would you like us to start on that process with staff?
Not right this second, but we've got a meeting.
Oh, yeah, I understand. Okay.
Well, I think at some point, we would like those all answered, and the first step would be to talk with staff about how they were addressed through the EA and then bring it to counsel at some point. Thank you, Counselor Elliott. Are you done? Director Rainbow.
Thank you. Question about water, water supply. You mentioned you've been meeting with Paradise Valley residents. Is that within the district of Squamish or do you have with people beyond the, you know, area?
Both. Both. They, they're both. They spread all the way up and down. My understanding is...
It was a group of both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I was in a meeting two weeks ago with people outside of the district.
Okay.
And they're really concerned about water in their wells.
Yeah.
So I just raised that issue with you and...
No, the EA doesn't recognize the boundary. It's just anybody in there, within that aquifer, the area of that aquifer whose wells might be affected, we have to make sure they're not affected.
And just if I can add to that, Tony, I'll come back to you. You may have been meeting with two or three people there, but there hasn't been communication amongst all the residents.
Heard that loud and clear at the public hearing.
Yes, so very much could be, so just because you're talking to one or two residents up there, doesn't mean you're talking to everybody.
Yes.
The people beyond the district are in the process of forming a community association.
Oh, okay.
So maybe once that's formed, I'll make sure you have...
Please, yeah, yeah. And I did offer at that public hearing to talk with Brenda and her group any, anytime, because she's one of the people, I think, in that potential.
In fact, just to make another comment, which has nothing to do with water, we were involved in Big White when it was probably at about that phase one stage.
Okay.
Enormous problems with security, especially at weekends.
Yeah.
I just wonder if you'd take that into account, if you had a place presence up there?
Yes.
What you'll do.
Yeah, definitely.
And that'll be part of any governance, whoever's governing gets to pay for it.
Yeah, of course, Big White was not part, it was just a rural, it was an improvement district, I think is all it was at the time. And they still, I think they still are there. They still don't have any local governments as such. They're an improvement district. Yeah.
We would apply environmentally friendly and crime prevention design.
And if there is anyone else who'd like to ask a question, please just let me know.
Just...
Yeah, perfect.
This is Mike Romano.
Yeah.
So your folks have mentioned...
Maybe just introduce yourself.
Oh, hello. My name is Sasha Fabry. I'm a community member. Curious about this project. Your folks have mentioned that the average for staff housing at projects like this is between 10 and 20%. You suggested that you might need to add more than that in the previous comment. And obviously, this project would lead to an approximate 20-year-ish housing boom in Squamish and increase the housing prices within the already existing areas. What are your plans for, if you could explain a little bit more, housing affordability and the prices for those staff housed, what will affect the market here?
So we don't have the detailed plans to this point, but it's something that we will have to solve to the satisfaction of the mountain resorts branch as part of their process and whoever is the local government. So Squamish is already wrestling with that problem, so we would be part of that solution. I lived in Whistler for many years, some of the time in staff housing. I owned, I owned my own townhome that was, had to be, the resident had to be an employee of the Whistler Housing Authority. The Whistler Housing Authority is a good model. They've let it slide a little bit over the last few years, but there will have to be something like that put in place. We won't succeed if we don't have happy and loyal staff that can afford to live there, right? We will fail. So we have to get that fixed.
A part of you, if I can. Do you have any plans for potential little market housing not associated with staff, part of with whatever local governments?
Not at this point. But again, we haven't, this is a conceptual plan as we move into the more detailed plan. You know, and if we hear that from the community as an E, you know, the sky's the limit. It's a, it's a relatively blank slate at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks. Does anyone else have a question? Yeah, welcome. Nice to see you.
Just want to, Richard Baker from Council of Squamish, Chief and Council, or Squamish Council, they changed the name today.
Did they?
The new council just calls it Squamish Nation Council. So just want to thank everybody for taking this time for this very important topic, right? It's important to us as being our traditional territory and that I really look over taking care of not just the district, but our own people, right? It's better for mankind if you look at all the environmental issues first before you move forward on anything. Just want to thank the team, Jim Stewart for doing the presentation. Sorry, I was a little late. We have council today, it's our meeting day today. But I want to thank council and mayor for, you know, just looking in for their environmental issues, right? That's what work is there to do. We stand behind the group as we look out to protect our resources and our precious water, right? So just want to thank them for doing that. And they're, they're going to be doing many engagements with the community, because before they do any engagement, we met with them and said, it's very important that you talk to us before it hits the media. We don't want to be left at the curb and find out through reading it in a paper that it's very important that it comes to us, the Squamish Council, and we do a little bit just at the day they're going to meet with anybody, that we let the membership know that we met with them and we're looking into the EA processes as much as anybody else, as we find it very important, you know, being trapped lines and everything. There's a lot of members that are opposed to it, but there's also, we've got to look out for our best, just whether it's wood fiber or, you know, anyways, right? So just want to thank you. Not feeling very well, but it's fun to get a great, thank you, bless you.
Thanks, Richie, Cheryl. Is there anyone else that might need to hear? Welcome.
Well, I'm one of the members of the chief, one of the 16 chiefs, and certainly one of the things I wanted to say too as well, with district councils, some of the questions that you guys asked, right, is the questions that council asked. It was also dealing with the aquifer, because we got a village right beside there. Also dealing with the cultural sensitive areas. That was discussed, you know, and just for your information, that it went from council and council met, and met with GASS, Garibaldi at Squamish. And one of the things that they had mentioned, they said, you must go up and meet with the community. So they opened and our council went up and opened up. I told them all, they came in, did their presentation, and certainly, like I say, is that, you know, the Squamish Nation has always been in business, right? Always open up for business, but not at the expense of the Squamish Nation. So they've always gone up and looking, just listening to the community, community with your environment. They talk about the environment. They talk about the culture. They talk about the business, the employment, training, education, and housing. Absolutely, housing is there. Policing, you know, my brother got up, he's a peacekeeper. He went and questioned about policing. So you know what? If there's a way of First Nations business, the environment and government's working together, I think we'll have a project. So I just wanted to share that. That was to him. Thanks, get...
Thanks. Yeah, we have about four minutes left. If anyone else wants to ask a question, I don't see any hands. So your next step is sort of, this was sort of like, here it is, you're going to go for, you're going to get input, you've got lots of studies to do for the next two years, it sounds like.
We, yeah.
What things will be moving as you do that?
We're going to keep things moving forward, and we are going to be looking, a real next step as far as Squamish Council is concerned is this approval in principle for a form of governance. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think probably at some point we will ask for some staff time to start working on that. Not yet, understand?
Staff size, we...
Understand, I know that.
There we go.
And we, you know, we've already offered a couple of years ago to contribute to, you know, backfill or whatever we got to do so Lyndon Gary can keep somewhat sane.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Buckland.
I just wanted to make a comment, just sort of, it's good to see the further details on this, and, you know, I think it's important that we as the local government be engaged with applicants, you know. Obviously, this, this project has a very storied history in our town, but I think, you know, I'm really, I'm looking forward to moving along in the process so that I think it's really important for us to see what we can do together and look at really moving that along, you know, so that you're not waiting to the end of two years from now to, you still don't know who the local government is going to be.
Right.
And I think we should start those conversations, and I think that's a staff thing, definitely, but also council as well.
Okay.
And I just, I wanted to share that. I didn't have too many questions. The report was, hesitation was...
Thank you.
And just on that, it's really, it's Squamish to decide to expand the boundaries. In the absence of that, the governing body is the SLRD.
Right.
So until that changes, that's, I just want to respect the fact that technically that is, for most of it, there's, you know, the aquifers in the district of Squamish currently, there's some infrastructure and obviously that type of thing in the district, but predominantly the governing body is the SLRD.
You can expect to see requests in time the next little while for us to appear at a SLRD meeting, and Whistler Council as well. We're looking forward to going to see Whistler Council.
We're all affected. I think Counselor Reese brought up at some point, the highway is the bottom.
There's one highway.
And every community will be concerned about the additional volume. They're concerned about just our growth, Whistler's growth and Pemberton's growth with the additional volume. So that is something everyone, and you'll probably want to speak to Pemberton as well at some point. Counselor Perry.
Yeah, just, is Whistler planning an expansion? I heard Whistler was planning an expansion.
Of their ski area?
To take in Garibaldi and Squamish.
They have approv...
I'm sure they would.
They have approval to expand 11 more lifts to the south of where they are now, towards function junction.
Bed units?
Some bed units. I don't know that, I know that from the ski side, it's, that's been approved.
Because, you know, I mean, that's, we all should be paying attention to that as well.
Well, that was part of the master development agreement that the nation signed off on, basically.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Gramatch.
We're not quite done. I've gone, some got hands up.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I just, I'm seeking a little bit of clarification, because I feel like I don't, I don't really understand where things are proceeding, because my understanding is, is that it is, it is a request that the applicants are, are looking to Squamish to potentially be the local government, is my misunderstanding.
So it's always been their preference.
But we're not requesting that right now. We're just saying we want to take, at some point soon, we want to take some steps to work with you or with staff, if that's how it comes to be, on what that should look like and get a report to you for a decision. Yes, we would, the decision should happen sooner than later.
And so what is, what is the timeline that we are considering for that is? I mean, I've heard two years, I've heard...
Well, two years is for the, we have to have this, that point decided long before two years. I would, I would think sometime in the next six months. We would like to have that.
So by the end of the year?
I would think so.
Early.
Yeah.
By October 22nd.
That's easy for you to say, counselor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Perry and Richie, for joining us today, and everyone else for listening, participating, and thank you.
Moving on.
Why don't we take a two-minute break before we go into our next item? We are back in our community home meeting of June 12th, and we're on item 41, District of Squamish and SLRD Electoral Area D Agricultural Land Use Inventory, and I want to welcome Director Rainbow again, who's from...
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
That's going to...
Pass it over to our planner on the file, Sarah McJanet.
Great, thank you, Chair. My name is Sarah McJanet. I'm a community planner with the District of Squamish. Good afternoon. We, the purpose today is to present the Squamish and Squamish Valley agricultural land use inventory that was completed in 2017. And this inventory was recommended as a first step for the district and the SLRD Area D for agricultural planning by the B C Ministry of Agriculture. And as counsel is aware, initiation of agriculture planning was something that our, we identified in our official community plan back in 2012.
Can I go where there is freezing in this... Freezing in here. Can we somehow... It's June. My clothes are...
That makes it, and they're open.
The mayor is... Sorry.
We're all freezing. I'm wearing a coat now.
Okay.
Just with down jacket on.
Counselor Perry, tell me, put your down jacket on.
Oh, gosh. Everyone's shit.
Well, you're part of Aiken, so you're used to this.
Apologies for interrupting. That's okay.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that because of the engagement mobilization and the in-kind And I just want to say that because of the engagement mobilization and the in-kind support that's come from the Squamish Food Policy Council, we are here today, so a big shout out to Crystal Tenbrink and Mickey Hunter, you wave over there.
Please join us, you know, this is a collaborative discussion if anyone wants to come in.
There's lots of people and introductions to do here. So we were able to take advantage of funding through the Investment Agriculture Foundation of BC to complete this work. We have to my right, Corinne Rosler, who's a geospatial team lead for the ministry, as well as Alison Fox, a land use agrologist. We have Kim Sutherland over there with the ministry as well. And they're going to, here to present the highlights of the land use inventory and talk about how the data can inform our future planning. Also, thank you Tony Rainbow, Director Rainbow for being here. And we also have Claire Daniels, who's the planner with the SLRD, who's our counterpoint. And just to let Counsel know, also, we have submitted an application for matching funding with the IAF, the Agriculture Foundation of BC, for an agriculture plan. So we will hopefully find out this July whether we have received matching funding for this. So that's the next step. But without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the ministry.
Claire, can please join us and anyone else will play it as we go. Anyone else want a cookie?
Okay. Hungry now, Carrie. All right.
It should be a carrot.
I'm going to start. I'm going to start and then I'll pass it off to Corinne because she knows more about the actual data. And so, yeah, agriculture began in Squamish Valley in the 1870s with the arrival of the first European settlers and it was quite a key driver of the economy at that time with quite a, quite a variety of different crops and agricultural products grown, some pops, potatoes, forage, and different types of livestock. We've seen, you know, as a result of globalization, global markets and different pressures in the sector as well, just a bit of a decline in, in the variety and scale of agriculture in the valley. But this, you know, we're starting to see some of these, some of these other areas that had maybe fallen off in recent years come back as, you know, land becomes less available in other areas like the Fraser Valley. And we have farmers that are having trouble accessing land in other areas of the province, so it represents an opportunity. So it was a good time to kind of gather some data and figure out what the state of their cultural land base is in Squamish. And if you go to the next slide, Corinne. So we basically have two different, two different sources of data to help understand trends in farmland use, but also what the baseline is. And that's the Census of Agriculture and Agricultural Land Use Inventory. So we've highlighted just some of the differences between the two here. So Census of Agriculture, readily accessible information to get, it's done every five years, but it's based on the farm unit. So it's not done on a parcel level necessarily. If a farm has multiple parcels, they'll report based on where their headquarters is. As I said, it's done every five years and it's based on the farm operator reporting what they're, what they're doing. And so you'll, the types of information you'll get is about the farms and who's operating it, types of land tenure and management, and various crops and livestock, and, and financial measures that they're using. So for the Agricultural Land Use Inventory, it's actually based on the parcel unit. So you can get more of a spatial analysis of what's going on on the land base. And so we collect information on biophysical land cover, what type of human or anthropomorphic land uses are happening on the land, infrastructure footprints, so whether that's residential or commercial or industrial or other non-farm uses happening on the land, and the different types of crops, livestock, and irrigation. And so the irrigation and so on helps inform the agricultural water demand model as well. And the recurrence depends on the need, basically driven by, by local government needs and provincial needs as far as when that would happen again. So it depends, you know, Metro Vancouver is trying to get on track to do these once every five years at the moment, but some other areas are looking at once every 10. And, you know, some areas, the Pemberton area was done eight years ago, so might be a good time to start thinking about when you might want to redo that. So we look at the entire ALR and it's done through orthophotography and field surveys. So we're not relying on the farm operator to tell us what, what is happening, we actually go and look. And, yeah, so we, it's mainly done through the orthophotography, but then it ground-truthed through field surveys. So the ALUI does give us a bit of finer grain information compared to census and allows us to look on a parcel level. And it really describes how the ALR is being utilized. And that provides really important information for when you're doing official community plans or an agricultural area plan or other municipal policy initiatives. And as we said, like repeating an ALUI will, you know, this, doing the initial ALUI is great as a baseline, but then repeating it down the road helps you with measuring the performance of, of your plans and, and any bylaws or regulations that you might implement. And, yeah, it is a critical piece to have as a basis for the agricultural water demand model, which is a critical component of any watershed management plan, knowing how much water is required for agriculture and what might be needed in the future if your agriculture expands. And, yeah, just, there's a variety of other uses the data can be used for. It helps identify opportunities for new farmers, new entrants to find land. And it's also been used by researchers at all levels for a variety of topics, looking at wildlife, climate, and water type research. So with that, I'll hand it over to Corinne.
So, thank you. In 2017, we completed Squamish River Valley ALUI Agricultural Land Use Inventory. And this slide is just a shout out to all the partners that helped us. And I have to apologize because the, you guys aren't on this slide, but a great shout out to the Food Council for initiating this project and sort of getting it on the map for all of us. So Partnership for Water Sustainability in BC played a big role, especially in the, in the development of the water demand model. And I would encourage you to ask them for a presentation on the water demand model and the results. It's really quite interesting and a fellow named Ted Van der Goolik would come up and be very, very happy to explain the results of that model. The project cost was $32,000 in total and it was cost share between all of the people on this. Okay, so in, in the Squamish River Valley, there is just over 4,000 hectares of agricultural land reserve. And 32% of that is in reserve and 19% of that is outside legal parcels. So we call what's left the effective ALR. It's parcelized ALR. That's where we think the most potential for farming operations are. And the ALR, and the ALUI is a parcel-based survey, so that 49% of the ALR is what we surveyed. So it's really interesting when you look at all the results and if we do percentages on, on what's farmed and what's not farmed, it's, the 49% of the ALR is the base that we're using. Okay, so just to reiterate the ALUI methodology, we take an orthophoto map. The yellow lines are the cadaster or the parcel boundaries. And in GIS, we split the parcels up into land cover components. And the map shows our coding system. We put a description of land cover, agricultural practice, irrigation system on the land cover itself. And then on the parcel, we note land use and livestock, things that are more of a parcel level activity. Livestock obviously travels between land covers and so we categorize livestock at a parcel level. So, so that's really the basis of the inventory. You can see it's quite a bit different than census. Never see anything like that represented in census. So then what we do is we follow it up with a windshield survey. There's only so much you can get for an ortho, from an orthophoto. These pictures are really old. We don't use laptops and we don't let the driver use laptops. So we have tablets and we have some paper maps, but mostly we're working on tablets now. So I just haven't got any pictures, so I apologize.
I know those chauffeurs.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and we, we love the chauffeurs. The distracted driving laws are great because it gives me an excuse to hire drivers so that we're much more productive. Okay, so we did the inventory and now we have some results. The data is available upon request. And we also have printed report, which is here. And Sarah's got, you got copies, and I think it's posted on the Ministry of Agriculture website. And we have a web app that I'm going to try to demo for you. And the water demand model also has a printed report. I think it's ready to be published, but we were looking for a new photo. We had, so it's just the cover that, that needed a new photo. Okay, so this is where I'm going to try to demo the web app, if I can. Okay, so.
It's not up there yet.
It's, okay. So this, this is built on an RTS online platform that's being served by DDBC, which is a provincial government agency. And so this page is just an introductory page. And I just want to get to the meat of it, so hopefully this will run. So land cover, as I explained, land cover, so we have a map in the center here, which shows all the land cover that we, that we inventoried. This pie chart on the side here, again, is the effective ALR. 93% of your ALR is natural, semi-natural land cover. You've got about 2%, which is actively farmed. You've got a tiny little bit which is inactively farmed, that's forage and pasture that hasn't been used for a while. And you have about 4.5% that's anthropogenically developed, so it's in buildings, parking, residential, residential. And so this, this is how this app works, is, is, it's got the tabs across the top and it just allows you to explore the data. This is more information on land cover. You can click on a, on an individual land cover and it pops up here and it tells you this is unused forage and pasture, inactively farmed, it's 3.31 hectares in the ALR. So, so it's just a way to explore the data. And let's see what this last one is. This is the detailed land cover and so we can actually break down whether or not it's a residential footprint, managed vegetation, transportation, non-built or bare settlement. All of those things are detailed. Let's see what this one is. This is a residential, medium house residential footprint. So we can, you can actually look at the data and figure out the percentage of the parcel that used for residential and what is perhaps left on that parcel that's available for You can answer lots of questions with this data. I'm just showing you a few things, a few ways that the data was put together, but you could ask many, many different questions. Using the data will, will help you get to some, some sort of perspective on how your ALR is being used, whatever, whatever your focus is. So this, this one is the land use page and it actually allows us to select a jurisdiction. So 155 parcels in the ALR in the District of Squamish. And if we go to SLRD, we've got 99 parcels in the ALR. And this is just in the Squamish River Valley, right? This is just for this ALUI. And, and then we can go and say, okay, how many are used for farming? Seven in SLRD. And if we go to the District of Squamish, four. So the used for farming definition is something that we apply to the data and it's based on a threshold of how much of the parcel is farmed or if it's got some sort of livestock operation on it. So if you have a, one horse on a, on a 10-acre parcel or 10-hectare parcel, it's not considered used for farming because the extent of the use is so low. So it's, it's, we have thresholds built and you can, if that, if that definition of used for farming doesn't suit your needs, you can apply a different definition. Whatever, whatever your egg planning requires you to kind of define used for farming. Hopefully we'll run out of time here. So, and this, this one actually shows the land use in the ALR. Hopefully the map will pop up. And so in Squamish here, we've got 31% residential, 29% in protected area park reserve. So protected area park reserve is a, is quite a large land use in the Squamish ALR.
And then there's all color.
So this is, this is a tab that's built on land availability. And again, so this, this is, so we've got 102 parcels or 60% of the land that we inventoried is unavailable for farming. And so obviously, we want to explore what is making these parcels unavailable for farming. They're in the ALR. And down here, you can see that 65 of them are less than one hectare. So there's a, you could take a closer look at those parcels, they probably all have residences on them. And, and so there just isn't any land available on those small parcels to farm. And that's why there's 65 right now out of the 102 that we, we can identify. So some of the other ones are going to be park and reserve. There's, there's a few other reasons why a parcel may be unavailable. It may be underwater or have a steep slope, for instance. ALR is not perfect, so there's some of those types of physical limitations as well that are considered unavailable for farming. The good news is that 34% is available for farming, 58 parcels. And this again is just some detailed land cover information. So if you really want to take a closer look at a particular parcel, you can see this, this portion of the parcel is unavailable, it's near the road, it's probably a residence, and the rest of the parcel is, is available for farming. The actively farmed is this light green, so this one here is actively farmed, it's pasture. So that's, that's how the data set works. Because availability for farming depends quite a bit on parcel size. In the Ministry of Agriculture, we like, you know, we like farming that is economically viable as a, as a real business. So we're not talking about gardens in people's backyards and, and so we're really looking at some nice big pieces of land that you can actually make a living off of. And that, that's what we're presenting here in terms of, of availability. So if you have, you know, an eighth of an acre, we don't consider that available for farming. And again, that's the definitions that we've applied, but you can apply any definitions you want, it's just a database.
I have a question.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just looking at this, I mean, it looks like some of these parcels are on the west side of the Squamish River where there's limited of any access. Is that sort of part of the inventory? Is it part of your figures?
Access, like, access to the parcel? Sorry, so...
Well, on the west side of the Squamish River, there's, there's basically no access unless you're moved, so.
Yeah.
Or unless the river moves.
Or the river moves, yeah. So, so we don't consider no access to be, like, we don't consider that in our, in our unavailability. So if we, if, if it's like, if it's in a cloverleaf and surrounded by freeway, which we see often in Metro Vancouver, we actually say that that's unavailable because nothing will ever change. And so that parcel is alienated, essentially. But the, there is potential to, to build a road back there. So it is available for farming, maybe not today, but this is the ALR, it's for future, current and future food production, and so we consider that parcel available. And just because there's no road to it doesn't mean that it should not be considered available for farming. That's, but again, I'm saying that's, that's the ALUI's perspective as we presented in this web map. You could, you could do, you know, your own analysis and say that there's limited accessibility and so for an egg, from an egg planning process, it may not be an area you want to focus on. So again, it's a database.
My understanding also was that some of those west side parcels and within the water courses were undefined legal parcels, so that were not considered as part of that effective ALR, as part of the original.
And I'm not even sure about area he's mentioning. I don't know the local area, unfortunately, so is it, is it here, right in here?
Yeah, it's a lot of the stuff on the... Yeah, it's a lot of the stuff on the west side, down below.
Down below, yeah.
Well, and I was looking at the top, too, just up the Squamish Valley.
Yeah, and you can see that this is a large Indian reserve right here. And I believe the Squamish First Nation declined to participate. So.
Just one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I can wait. Are you just about finished? I mean, I've got three or four questions.
I'll just go through a couple other, and I'm not sure how much time we have.
You can extend it a little bit.
A little bit more. So this is the crop tab. And so I like to use the hops as the example. You can see there's, so we can actually take a look and figure out where the hops are. That's where your hops are. There's two little fields. One is .7 hectares, and one is 2.37 hectares. So I don't know where your tomatoes are.
Oh, there's my house.
Some tomatoes. So this is kind of pretty, kind of fun. This is your crop breakdown. Eighty-seven percent of all the cultivated crops we found is pasture. Got a little bit of tree fruits, 5% in vegetables. Cultivated land means it was, you know, probably plowed, and we didn't know what was going in. 7% hops and a little bit of mixed berries. This is where we found livestock. And I think everybody knows there's some nice horse farms up here. And so this pie chart here is essentially presenting the data by the pound, animal unit equivalents, we call it. So 62% of animal unit equivalents are equines, horses. You've got some sheep and goats, beef, some swine, some poultry. And that's really the breakdown of the livestock. And I just want to show you one more tab here. This is what we call the data viewer. So this is where you can turn these layers on and off, all these themes on and off. And I think this is the monastery here. And actually zoom in and take a closer look at the photography. And then you can turn, like, the land cover detailed on. You can turn parcel availability on, and you have to turn the ones off. And then you can click on it and, again, get the inventory. So that is the web app.
If I might just jump in briefly before you continue with your other slides. Certainly, this app is really interesting for us to take a look at. Right now, it's password-protected, but.
I can't find the web.
Yeah, so we are having discussion about opening this up so that it can be a publicly available app. Also, as part of this project, we have the data from the project. And part of our agreement is being able to incorporate those data layers within our GIS, which hasn't happened yet, but will happen hopefully sometime, just like for the later in the year, so that we can add these types of tabs to our existing GIS so that the public and the planning staff and decision-makers can have a deeper understanding and be able to access the information from the land inventory.
Awesome.
Thank you. So I have a few more slides if there's time, but was there any questions?
Why don't we go through the slides quickly, and then I've got a couple of questions stacking up.
These are just screenshots because I was afraid that the internet wouldn't work, so, sorry. So we talked about the crops. So there's about 52 hectares crop that we found, 40 hectares in pasture, and 11 hectares of this is outside the ALR. So this pie chart includes, like, 13 hectares of farming. 25% of your farming was found outside the ALR, which is interesting. This is the livestock AU, animal unit equivalents. And they were actually distributed across 47 different livestock operations. So not a lot of livestock, but 21 horse operations, that equals 62%. And this just looks at livestock a little bit more closely. All of the livestock operations we found were small or very small, which means less than 25 horses or cows. So you have, you know, quite a few, I think it's 11, very small-scale poultry. That's just backyard poultry that we found.
Was this done prior to the farm in Brackenaw? Being sort of planted with sheep and cattle?
Yeah, it was. Bert had just got them right after we did it. We actually visited him the day that we were touring around as well.
Okay, so just quickly, you look at your ALR parcels by size. In total, 11 parcels are used for farming in the ALR. 10 of them are privately owned, and one of them is Crown. Now, although the numbers are really, really low in terms of used for farming, what's interesting is the trend that we see here is exactly the same as the trend you see across the province. Small parcels are less likely to be farmed. You have more small parcels than anything, and they're always less likely to be farmed. So now, because private ownership is probably, parcel size and ownership is two main drivers for availability for farming. Crown land is another discussion, and we could do these same products with Crown land, but the products from here on in are just on the privately-owned land. There's 170 parcels that are privately owned that we consider in the ALR. By parcel count, 60 of them are unavailable for farming. 6% are used for farming, and 34% are available. And by parcel area, it's a little bit different. Unavailable for farming drops down to 46%. But used for farming also drops to 3%. So when we look at the parcel sizes again, again, it's only privately-owned parcels. You can see all those small, less-than-one-hectare parcels that are unavailable for farming, just mainly based on their size and the existing development, that's all. You have a lot of opportunities in the 2 to 4 hectare, 4 to 8. And there's a little bit of, there's a few parcels all the way up to 64, and there's one above 64 even. So ALR parcels, this is the land use that are on, the available parcels. There's 64% has residential use, 31% has no apparent use. Be interesting to understand the potential on those 31% of no apparent use. So that's 18 parcels. Faster. Okay, this is the last one, I believe. So this is the unavailable, land use on the unavailable parcels. And I just have to mention that I can't explain the protected area, the 18% protected area on private ownership. And I think it's got to do with Ministry of Environment or the District of Squamish. So they're not Crown parcels, they're not provincial Crown parcels, but they're owned by a Crown municipality or a Crown corporation. And those are in protected area status, but they come across in the database as private ownership.
Would the riparian area come up in that?
No, riparian areas are, in most cases, are too small for us to map. So our minimum distance is 10 meters. So if you have a riparian area that's larger than 10 meters, we call that natural and semi-natural. And I'll just leave it to Alison to sum up here really quick.
Yeah, so I think the sort of message that we started seeing coming out of the ALUI was that there is a fairly small amount of the effective ALR that's currently being used for farming. And actually, a third of all the farmed area we found was, 25% or a two-third, of all the farmed area was actually occurring outside the ALR. But there are those 34% of the privately-owned ALR parcels that are considered available for farming. And those are sort of in that mid-to-larger lot size component. And those parcels currently have few anthropogenic uses. And so it seems like there could be significant opportunity to expand farming within the area. You also have the advantage of having some slightly lower land prices than what we're seeing currently in the Fraser Valley, so possibly an opportunity to attract new entrants because of that as well. Some barriers to entry that we would see would be land clearing. Often, if you're a new entrant, it's hard to come up with the funds for land clearing. And, yeah, and just that the land base would continue to require continued protection in order to be able to take advantage of the opportunity. So, you know, possibly, yeah. So some next steps could certainly be looking at some planning to figure out how to leverage the opportunities and strengths in the area. And having a plan could also help you access further funding and programs. There's certainly a lot of interest in the provincial government right now in getting new entrants onto farmland and getting more land under cultivation. And we don't necessarily know what the programs around that are going to look like yet, but we're expecting that to take shape in the near future. And also, there is the ALR revitalization process that is underway right now, which should be completed shortly and could provide some further direction and opportunity there as well. So that's basically it for us, and take some more questions.
Awesome. I have Councilor Prime Halsey Chappell on deck, and just want to make sure anyone in the audience, if they have a question, please just let yourself know.
They won't have time. I've got too many questions.
Well, I do a lot.
I didn't quite get your handle, Alison. You're a land.
I'm a land use archeologist, so a land use planner. But, yeah, and I was also the surveying archeologist on the.
Yeah, that's an interesting job. I mean, it's the small parcels that I've always found the most interesting. And so in our zoning, if someone's got two acres on Finch Drive, and it's ALR, they can't subdivide, right? It's a question.
Through you, Chair, that, like, in terms of subdivision of the RL parcels, there's a minimum lot size, so there's no restriction right now around, like, as long as the minimum lot size is being met, there's no overarching restriction on subdivision. However, I will say that after going through this ALUI process, after working through the food policy and the OCP, and then looking at some of the moves that the SLRD has been doing around zoning, through our zoning amendments and alignment with the OCP, we will be looking at tweaks, especially for, like, creating ag-specific zoning for those ALR lands, because right now, ALR has, like, a rural residential, which permits agriculture, but there's some of those protections that are common in other jurisdictions that are being recommended. Like, we don't have those in place yet.
Also, is it Judd Road? It's got a few big parcels in there, and there's a subdivision going on there with 38 or 40 homes on it that was ALR. Anyway, I mean, I find that a bit of a concern. I've always viewed the, you know, the small lots just over here on Government Road and in, around the swimming pool and that there. That was all beautiful ALR land that's all been subdivided and built on.
I think there's more clarification to that question. We certainly have our zoning and subdivision rules, but the ALR itself has a policy around what they will and will not consider a subdivision. So if it's actual ALR designated lands, they would deal with. They would keep subdivision or not, would they not?
Yeah, I think we would have to refer the subdivision to the ALC. And then ALC has, in certain service, that allows for subdivision, kind of for.
But that's lots over eight hectares, or is it lots?
So, yeah, I can ask about it a little bit better. I think, is that, yeah, certainly, the Agricultural Land Commission Act would have still overriding authority on subdivision in the ALR. And so your minimum lot sizes would kick in at the point at which the ALC would provide permission to subdivide. And, yeah, the subdivision is considered, would be considered by the local panel of the commission. And so they tend to make a decision on a case-by-case basis on those.
So what size of lot is that?
They don't have a specified size of lot. They will look at the merits of the application.
And the land uses.
Well, I'm thinking of the two-acre lots that we have and five-acre lots in town that are nice juicy soil that are solely getting subdivided, and then houses are getting built on. So those are obviously too small, right?
Well, if they're not on ALR lands, they wouldn't go to the ALC. They would just be simply adhering to our bylaws.
With the ALR maps, I mean, do you not have maps that show agricultural land with subdivisions in them? Like you say, it's 30% used up by houses. I mean, that's ALR land, but in our zoning, it might be R2.
Right.
I'm just wondering if there's a conflict there, and I guess.
Yeah, so one of the things that we do encourage through our guidelines is having that lands in the ALR be designated within agriculture zone. So that is one of the things that.
So I guess those small lots are not ALR, but they're in agricultural land areas.
Right.
Do you want to help provide some?
I mean, in the SLRD, we have a lot of land in the ALR, and all of our land except for a couple areas in Area B. We have zoned agricultures who match the ALR boundaries, generally just to provide, to help present a consistent message in terms of what the highest and best use for that land is. And we do have pretty high minimum parcel sizes for the most part. And that's set up the zoning. And then generally, the process is, if it meets the zoning, it would just go straight to the ALC as an application for subdivision, but the local government weighs in first on that process, and then it goes to the ALC to make the final call.
And our process would be the same.
Well, I think of the, you know, Judd Road, where those big lots are. I mean, are they ALR or are they R2? Well, I'm just trying to get an idea of our little parcels. Are we protected?
None of the recent subdivisions that we've seen were on ALR lands. And so the subdivision that's happening in Brackenaw, that's not ALR. And neither is the Finch Road area. My knowledge is no ALR lands in that area.
Okay, the small parcels. So I guess, I mean, the last time we had a presentation from this group, we talked about the value of farmland and getting the value up so people can start farming it. And so I just.
So I think that was sort of the last slide, was now we've done the inventory, the next phase is an actual agricultural land planning document in conjunction with the SLV, and that's the next step.
And do you have a list of things for people to plant in Squamish?
That would be the next step. This is a land inventory. This is the data. But I can say, answer that a little bit. Squamish is similar in some ways to Pemberton, and in some ways to Fraser Valley. And it's one of the most productive, Fraser Valley's one of the most productive agriculture zones in Canada. And Pemberton also has very strong features agronomically. And so the number of commercial commodities, like, that are grown in the Fraser Valley are over 200. It's the most diversified area in Canada. So Squamish would be similar. So you couldn't say, you couldn't miss five crops. It's not like our farm in Saskatchewan where you have five crops. It's, you know. The question is, can't you grow? Come back, you, we'll get some.
Well, just the last thing, last thing is that water demand modeling. Apple, please, Apple, ask those guys to come here for the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Stu.
Thanks. I find this absolutely amazing and fascinating to look at our ALR land, but I also find it quite depressing that since the, you know, for a long time, we haven't had a diversity of crops. It's always been hops and potatoes. So I find it interesting, and I wonder about our soil quality with the difficulty of mostly housing livestock on this land, as well as the history of not having a diversity of crops in our land, and now the. and now the minimal amount of land that we actually have available for, well, we have a lot available. It's in private hands zone. And if it's not being farmed, then over time, the soil quality becomes really difficult. So I wonder about, I'm interested in having you comment on the fact that like the horse, the horse farms are mostly for pleasure riding. So it's still considered a farm if it's ALR and equestrian riding?
It, that is considered to be designated farm use under agricultural law, commission regulations, so.
So it doesn't have to be producing a viable edible product in order to be considered a viable, a farm. Is that correct?
Not under the...
I noticed that the majority of our farming is equine.
And pasture.
Yeah, and I'm interested in, and I guess Mayor Heinzman said that the future of policy lies in actually looking at diversity of crops and how we can actually maybe shift some of our land use in the ALR into different crops. But I can't, you know, if carrots and tomatoes, we have little bits of farming, but if those things have never been farmed commercially in our area, what are the chances, have you seen areas shift towards commercial and agricultural farm? And is there policy in place?
So I'll answer that. Yes, absolutely. The reason that you're seeing a long gap between fairly productive agriculture, and there's lots of signs of like forensic, if you did a forensic analysis, a lot of agriculture in the past, several decades of less agriculture, less intensive use. And now looking forward into a future where you're going to try to bring that up again. What are the drivers for that are mainly markets? It's not soil limitation. It's not water limitation. It's not climate limitation. It's markets. And what you're seeing now is a strong drive towards local markets. And that's across the board. And you do have farmers here that have in the past grown successfully, grown a wide variety of root vegetables currently. And there is one farmer here currently working who is growing root vegetables and above ground vegetables and it's fine. Like it's, you don't have to worry about soil quality. That's there. Soil is good.
And I know in the Pemberton area, there's a big concern about large-scale horse racing horses taking over large-scale plots of land. I think it's more hobby type stuff here, as you said, it's all really small. But that's always been a conversation about ALR lands, but is it ALR intended for producing food or wine or beer? Or is it about racehorses and riding?
I can answer that as well. That's okay. So one way to look at it is that as agriculture develops in an area, you see more lucrative crops often replacing less lucrative crops. Horses are in the less lucrative side. So you're seeing the horse operations being replaced in the Fraser Valley by higher value crops, more intensive production that produces more per hectare. Horse, horse farms don't tend to do that. One of the concerns in Pemberton is masked a bit. So it is the estate homes. So the idea of I'm going to have my country residents and my, you know, warm-blooded horses and I'm going to have a nice jumping barn, you know, for me. And I'm going to put my estate home in the middle of a parcel. It's not exactly horse farming. It's estate home, country living. And the SLRD in Area D here has put in a very good land use plot law that has restricted that. And we see from this land use inventory that aside from these small lots, you don't have, the ALR is not junky. It's actually quite clean. You're starting with a good clean slate. I was very delighted to see that. And then when I drove through it, you know, this year after this had been done, it's quite promising that way. So you haven't got that speculation, that type of speculation on the land in the SLRD area because they put these bylaws through. And the land is saved basically for agriculture.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, quickly, and then I've got council... I guess back to the, back to the animal farming. Is the ministry looking at all at discouraging cattle farms or because of climate and use of land as far as high-density vegetable farming as opposed to cattle farming? And the other thing is vertical agriculture is that even though the ALR land may not be viable to plant all year round and be economically viable, you're mentioning markets, putting up buildings and doing vertical agriculture with a variety of crops as well, is that being, is that encouraged as well?
And certainly we can encourage that through the land use plan we're about to do with the SOD.
Yeah, I think all this will come out in the agriculture area plan. So we're not, we shouldn't sit here and try to do the plan. But basically, no, no, well, it's kind of fun, right? Think about that stuff. But the, but the thing is that the Ministry of Agriculture does not discourage or encourage. Like it's all private land. It's what entrepreneurship wants to do.
Thank you.
Here.
I have a quick question from the inventory perspective. Was there anything that struck you or stood out in terms of infrastructure that was missing as a barrier, like any dikeings? Is that sort of seen as a critical barrier in this area other than sort of land clearing?
So we haven't done a lot of analysis on that. I think more of that will come out through the, through an area plan process as far as identifying that and, and you know, also just processing infrastructure and so on as well, which might be providing barriers that might come out through that process as well. I think we were able to pull out the land clearing from the inventory just because we can see a lot of it in natural and semi-natural vegetation. So that's, you know, right off the top of the mind, we can make that inference. But some of these other things are a little bit harder to gather through, through this process.
So to gather whether they're impacted by like flooding or...
Yeah, and I think the question about access as well is another piece of that.
Thank you. And I think you might have partly answered my question, but I was just wondering, I know when I've seen reports from the ALC about a particular parcel of land that's proposed for subdivision, for example, they evaluate it based on a scale, I think it's one to five, from productive to non-productive. And this, can you sort of broad brush that? The 49% that we saw on one of the first pie charts, is it good land, bad land, mediocre land? Or do you have rough percentages?
That's the soil classification and you had an explanation about why you didn't include that.
Yeah, so we can do that analysis. It's just, it's a GIS exercise to take the soils and acapability mapping that exist in the area, and I'm not sure what quality it is, and overlay it with the ALUI data and come up with some conclusions as to capability. And that's the beauty of this ALUI database is you can overlay it with zoning, with acapability, with soils, you know, with climate data and come up with some of those, those answers. I don't have it now.
And then I'll give a general answer. The agriculture land reserve was put in place on the basis of scientific information, on the basis of soil classification. That's why it's really important to pay attention to your agriculture land, your agriculture land reserve. If you build on your reserve, you decide to develop it, you're not going to be able to go somewhere else and find agriculture land to grow on. Because what the agriculture land reserve is it. And so, and further to that, I haven't looked in any detail at the ag capability of Squamish, but I can confidently say that you can grow a wide range of crops on, in Squamish. The soils will be silty, silty low. They'll be, you'll have some attributes from Pemberton, some attributes from the Fraser Valley. It'll classify out as a two to three probably most of the time, possibly one to three. Very good. And then you'll find...
One being good.
Meaning one is the best, very rare, to five, which is, is not as good. More, more, and one, you can grow almost any crop. Five, you can grow fewer types of crops. However, having said that, you actually are good to have a mix of different soil types. And having a five does not mean that the land should be developed and it shouldn't be in the agriculture land reserve. Many, about a third of the farm gate receipts are from, are from non-soil-based agriculture because you need the climate, the water as well, right? I've had people call me about Squamish from overseas and they're interested in the water and the climate here. And the soil is of no consequence. So you get that, right?
I just wanted to see if there's anyone in the public that wants to ask any questions about this? Appreciate everyone being here.
Actually, I just had a comment.
You can't, you can't bother them there, honey.
No, no, I have a question about...
You have to, you have to go to the microphone.
You know, it's not even a question. I just have a question as a comment. No, for real. It's all good.
Thank you. That's really interesting. And this is just the first piece of sort of getting some data in place to be able to do the next piece. Sarah, do you want to maybe talk about what the next step is?
Yeah, I can jump in. So we have submitted an application for an ag plan for matching funding. So jointly and respectively, the SLRD and the district have allocated $15,000 each from our 2018 budget. And we've requested matching funding from IAF. And then our proposal was put together sort of collaboratively with the Squamish Food Policy Council. So thank you very much to Crystal and Mickey for helping support us. It's a joint application. We have also reached out to the Squamish Nation to see about their interest in participating with us along the way, similar to the ag plan that happened for Area B and Lilowet, which involved the Stottiam Nation. So we're, we put that out there and haven't heard back yet, but... And then the plan is to involve all of our partners and the ministry and as sort of like a steering committee. And then hopefully initiate later this year pending successful matching funding. So we'll provide an update to council as soon as we hear.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone coming and sharing this and doing the work. I love that stuff, so it kind of gets me all excited. And thanks, Mickey and Crystal and the gang for helping contribute to this as well and giving us a bit of a kick in the butt to do it. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. We'll take a one, two-minute recess just while the room is clear and then have to condense the last two. We are back in our community home meeting and we're on, back on number four two, the zoning by update.
Okay, thanks. So I'm going to run through a bunch of our miscellaneous amendments. These cover a really wide range of topics, so just bear with me because I'm going to jump around a bunch. So the first up is the C4 amendments. And so these follow from the downtown zoning amendments that were adopted by council this past March. And these included regulations for the floor area ratio and upper story setbacks. And it was flagged by council to consider extending the boundary of these amendments to include properties up to Buckley Avenue. And so that's what we're presenting here. And so this amendment would capture these properties that are shown in red below and wrap those into those Cleveland character amendments.
And is 38230 and 38220 already captured?
Those are Zone C2. It's gas station. They'll, if they want to do anything other than a gas station, they'll have to come forwards for rezoning.
In which case we didn't.
We would steer them towards, yeah, in line with the Cleveland amendments.
That was Ken. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So does this include that slope of the larger parcel there, the, onto Bailey Street, where it enters Cleveland Avenue?
Yes, correct. So...
So that would also be setback?
Yeah, we worded the amendment so that it would wrap around Bailey Street and capture the frontage that's on Bailey Street as well for the upper story setback. Okay, so we'll move on to the RS3. So this residential small lot zoning was first adopted by council in 2013. To date, we've seen a total of eight RS3 rezonings and 23 homes have been constructed. And the FAR and the height are very similar to the RS2 and the RS1 zones. However, in the RS3, the setbacks are reduced and lot coverage has been increased. And this is leading to larger homes being built. And this was not the original intent of the RS3 zone, which was for smaller and hopefully more affordable dwellings to be located on these small infill lots. So looking at the table, the comparison table here, what staff are proposing is to reduce the lot coverage and density as well as slightly increase the interior side setback. And we're hoping that this will encourage these smaller homes to go on these lots. And we took a close look at the metrics of four out of the eight RS3 developments constructed to date. None of these developments had a lot coverage over 37%, so there should be no issue with lining up with that. But almost all of the developments had maxed out their floor area ratio at 0.5 FAR. So it's hoped by slightly scaling back the FAR and by also implementing a proposed 80% limit to the floor area of the upper story, that the form and character of these homes will be a lot more in line with existing dwellings that are surrounding them.
So I know with Amble Path, which is the first one, the approach at that time was just to set a maximum floor area as opposed to ratios and FARs was just, I can't remember the exact number. Couldn't build larger than 1,700 square feet, not including garage or something like that. I mean, is that approach maybe easier? Because these small lot subdivisions have different sized small lots. I mean, there's really no consistency to them. So if you just said flatly, you can't build bigger than 1,700 square feet. And in addition to that, you can have a deck and a garage or something like that.
So we took the more nuanced, we want to try a more nuanced approach that kind of dabbles in regulating more form and character wise. And that's what the 80% is keyed into. So one example is the RS3 that's going up right on the corner of Mount Quam Road and going up to the Highlands. And that's just like a box where they've maxed out their FAR. And in comparison to that, Gary McFarlane's original RS3s that are on Wilson Crescent, he's taking that kind of 80% approach just on his own accord, where he's put most of the upper story in the roof line with larger dormers. And that form and character is likely more appealing and a better fit for the neighborhood. So we're, we want to try kind of to experiment with that and see how that goes.
I mean, you could have, if I could, you could have both, you know, set a number and not more than 80% of the lower floors on the upper floor. I mean, you could still, I take your point. You don't want the boxes. You want to... Anyway, I'll just, it's out there. It was the first one. That way you don't get in and hung up with the larger, the smaller lot is. If there are S3, then that's the maximum.
Councilor Prior, what?
Yeah, no, I agree with Stapp on that. Although I do like that square one going up at the end of Mount Quam there. I do know the small lots in Valley Cliff where they did the two-lot subdivisions. They just don't fit in with the neighborhood. And so the 80% would work in a real traditional neighborhood better.
Councilor Brackenwell and Councilor Stott?
Yeah, I mean, I like the 80%, but I think councilor raised this on to something. I actually think we should add in, because I think we're trying to address two things. So number one is form and character, neighborhood fit, but number two is also affordability. And, you know, I think the Amble Path is actually a pretty good example where prices, you know, have an increase to the degree of, you know, other places in town and...
That's weird.
No, but for the land. Yeah, and but for the land size, right? So because there's always, your land is your biggest cost. But if you're limiting the square footage that can be built on that land, then you're already, you are sort of baking in some affordability. And, and you know, just the way the market expectations are, so I don't know. And then I also wonder...
Can I go on that? You told me class. Would it help if we had a maximum to actually get one-story buildings to, for senior time? As opposed to a floor area, which you're going to get two-story buildings all the time?
That would work in certain neighborhoods, maybe in certain parts of Valley Cliff and in the Highlands. But where the flood hazard is an issue, we still have to have that flood construction level.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm also wondering if, do we want to take this opportunity to change the accessory dwelling thing at this point? Would we, because again, we're sort of talking about, you know, secondary suites and carriage homes and all of that, and I don't know if we want to...
Do we, we don't allow secondary suites in RS, do we?
We do.
We do? We do, all right. I think all RS zones we allow.
Yeah, carriage house.
One, two, three.
Which is a hard to build a carriage house in, except for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, and that's my, I'm wondering, the carriage house and carriage house, secondary suite, main house with a lot coverage restriction. Does that, has that been?
Yeah, sorry, and I didn't, I kind of breezed over that really quickly, but we have. So if it was just the principal dwelling unit and no coach house, it would be a 37% lot coverage max. But if they wanted to add in a coach house, then it would bump the lot coverage up to 50%.
What about the lots downtown that are 5,500?
There are not Zone, there are RS1 or?
RS2. RS2. Some of our, some of those lots are duplex. Mostly the lots downtown are zone duplex.
Correct, and most lots downtown are Zone RS2, which does permit a duplex.
Yes.
So is that 50%? How would that fit? It went.
70%.
Yeah?
Before I can add to this, we are going to be looking at RS1 and RS2 with the bigger zoning bylaw update. This is just specific to RS3. So RS1, RS2 changes proposed R1.
Okay, good, yeah. Good ideas.
Okay. Do, do we want to revisit though, putting in like an absolute maximum size? Because now would be the time to add something like that.
So what was Amble Path, it was 17?
I think it was 17, yeah, around 17.
Yeah, it was a 1,400 number too, and it might have been buried to the size of the lot. And I've just, it's been a while. And I don't know exactly whether that included garages or not.
So let's, just.
So I don't want to sort of specify something now.
Is council generally amenable to considering an actual size of house? I mean, we can always take it over the bylaw once we actually see the bylaw in front of us, but. Council, or council.
I'm, I'm okay with that, because I think it gives people then, depending on the size of their lot, the ability to create the home that works in that square footage. Yeah, I, I think, I'm open to seeing that when it comes back.
And we're going to do that with lot coverage? Is that how we're going to control it, or we're not going to just put a safe, same setting?
No, it would be a, it would be a maximum floor area. Not a floor area ratio.
But if you buy a bigger lot, you get a better.
No, it would be a maximum floor area, not a ratio.
Yeah, well, I don't like that. I got four kids, if I was going to build a house, 17 hundred square feet wouldn't cut it.
You buy an RS host, not an RS3 house.
Not if I couldn't afford it.
You have to be able to afford a, something bigger than 8,900 square feet.
Question? Question? Yeah, does that include the flood construction level? How do you, how do you maximize, how do you include the flood construction level in the maximum size house? Because our 500 square foot living area, if you included the flood construction level, is 1,200 square feet.
Do you want to have time to think about this? I mean, this is a, you can.
Yeah, we can put our heads to this, and, and if we think it's a great idea, then maybe we'll bring it forwards and just explain it fully when we come to first reading.
Yeah, but yeah, and take all these things into consideration. It may be certain ways it makes sense and certain areas it doesn't make sense. Anyway, we'll leave that with you to sort of, use lots to contemplate.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so the district introduced these multi-unit flex units as a new form of housing that was part of the 2017 zoning bylaw update. And these flex units are a form of suite that could be integrated into both townhouses and duplexes. So Stafford just proposing to clarify that these flex units would be permitted in RS2 zones, in the RS2 zone as well as all of the townhouse zones. So this is just really for clarification. And then Stafford also proposing to permit secondary suite use in duplexes, which the code allows under certain conditions. The difference between a secondary suite and a flex unit in a duplex is based on the location and the ratings of the firewalls. And these changes would further increase the range of rental housing options that are available in existing neighborhoods. Is that clear, is mind?
That's clear.
Okay. And then the district's expanded our zoning and business license provisions to allow for more flexibility for home-based businesses. However, we're observing that some of aspects of these more intense home-based businesses are not necessarily compatible in their residential neighborhoods. Currently, the number of business vehicles permitted in association with a home-based business is unlimited. And for clarification and also for improved neighborhood compatibility, Stafford proposing limiting the number of work vehicles associated with a home-based business to two vehicles maximum. So the next up is our energy efficiency bonuses. So the zoning bylaw currently contains height bonus and density bonus for increased energy efficiency. And to align with our forthcoming energy step code conversion, we're proposing that these bonuses just be updated to speak to the, to speak to the step code. And essentially, it would be that buildings would go one energy step above the minimum required, and then they would qualify for this bonus. So it would just be jumping up from the base step to the next step.
Are we talking all buildings or residential buildings?
The majority of the bonus are geared towards residential, so it's for.
And that we still account for wider walls and stuff, not necessarily bigger buildings?
No, this is to replace the scheme that we have in place now for density bonuses. So if you are in a block lane and your FCL exceeds 1.5 meters, then you're able to go 1.5 meters above. And right now you have to insulate more, but we're just proposing to go to step code instead.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then the other one is for the accessory dwelling units. So you get a density bonus from 70 square meters to 90 square meters for larger lots only. And that would be if you go up one step.
All right, and finally, so the district currently requires that 30% of parking stalls and shared parking areas in multifamily buildings have access to a Level 2 charging receptacle. At the April 3, 2018 regular council meeting, council passed the motion that Stafford include the consideration of requiring 100% shared residential parking to be electric vehicle charger ready for multifamily development applications as part of the cannabis zoning bylaw amendment. Stafford reviewed research and policies implemented in other municipalities, including the city of Richmond, which currently requires 100% of new residential parking stalls to be equipped with a capacity to provide Level 2 charging. The table above shows an estimated cost, based on an average cost per parking space of just over $2,000 if these stalls were serviced with dedicated Level 2 circuits. The district is about to implement the energy step code at a higher step than some of the other jurisdictions in the Cedar Sky and North Shore for multifamily development. Financial impact of meeting higher steps in the step code is unknown at this time. Similar to the step code implementation, there's a lack of confirmed cost information when it comes to installation of EV charging stations in new developments. The cumulative cost of meeting step three of the step code and 100% EV charging stations could be significant. Stafford recommend that a more robust level of public consultation is necessary before implementing a higher level of charging requirements. The potential cost impact to implement this degree of change requires consultation that goes beyond the scope of this zoning bylaw update. Furthermore, Stafford only beginning to implement the 30% requirement and suggests that more time is required to evaluate its success. So we recommend that council refer this back to Stafford for the research and public consultation.
I think we should go 100%. I think any, any builder that's building today, if they're not building 100%, they're going to be behind the times in a year from now when it's going to be 100%. And they can't sell their buildings. Like, I think it adds more than $1,000 or $1,200 of value by far than the cost. Any, you know, I think we're saving developers if we make to this, Susan and Ted.
Yeah, I would completely agree with that. And really putting the electric vehicle infrastructure in is absolutely essential in the new buildings. Whether they actually put the charger in or not, they have to be capable. Every stall has to have enough, and we have to figure out load sharing as well and electricity implications, which is, that'll be theirs to figure out.
And I'd rather repeat the technology stuff.
Yeah, I'd rather repeat the developers figure out than are figure out once, if the building is behind the times, they can't put it in after. So why build obsolete buildings? I think our, our district has to be prepared for electric vehicle implementation.
I just put one in my house, bought an electric car. I do think that the buildings should have enough power coming into them to support. I mean, I can understand why Stafford wants to review it a little bit, because you have 100 parking stalls and you need a 40 amp breaker for every one of them for the electric charging stations. It's, it's a big ticket item. As long as they bring the power into the building, I think that's all we should. 30% now and bring the power in, four more until the research is done, I'm okay with that. Because in 10 years from now, it's not going to be 100% electric cars.
Doug?
Yeah, I'm sort of in the same, kind of agree with both of you. It, it seems a little onerous right now to impose 100%. And, and that's just an extra cost. But we, I was thinking, I don't know exactly how these things are wired, but if you could rough, do the rough in wiring now, avoid the expensive part at the end, so that you could add it later and have the power and the necessary panel for the power coming into the building. So it would be a relatively simple thing to upgrade in a few years if the need arose. And then they can do it in stages or by owner or whatever as the need arises. And so it's kind of right there. But to just say everybody's got to spend instead of $69,230,000 is, you know, we're not necessarily adding the affordability of buildings right now.
So can, can we in the bylaw, and I think that's essentially what Council Stafford and I were intonating, is it has to be electric car ready, 30% accessible to receptacles. Suspect we're going to move that up to 50 pretty darn soon and maybe up to 100, but the entire entity being ready for electric car ready. Can we?
Yeah, we can look at that while we move that up.
I think they'd be smart to go 100%.
Yeah, premium wiring and maybe not requiring the charger. So every, 100% ready, EV ready. And they can charge, you want an EV installation, it gets charged back to the owner. So that's pretty simple to do. You make it ready, and then if the purchaser wants to add the charger in, they can get that done. And even up, they'll be making money charging, no doubt.
Does that, is that helpful?
Yes.
Do that, awesome. Is that the last one?
Almost, but yes. Stafford implemented a consult level on the IAF2 participation spectrum for this project. An open house was held at the house down in Impub on June 7 to present the zoning amendment proposals and solicit community input. Feedback from the open house was constructive and generally supportive of the proposed changes.
Cannabis. I don't think we're going to get to the bottom of the cannabis thing for now. Is council comfortable having the bylaw come back as proposed? So we have something in place in August when the new regulations come in? That's the way, regulations. With an eye that we may be amending this in September, October, November, something like that. Is, is council ready to at least do that? If not, I don't want a whole discussion about it because we'll put it to another committee meeting. And it won't be part of this, it's only final. Ted?
I'm ready.
I'll be ready if I understood why we, why Stafford's saying we can't regulate noise and odor. I'd like to understand that a lot better. Otherwise, I would still push for a greater buffer to residential.
And as Doug was saying, the caries was a Section 219 covenant on that that allowed it to be shut down, not, not one of our bylaws that was regulating necessarily, so. Yeah, okay, thanks, Jason?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, I think the, the retail, there seems to be consensus on that. Production, I don't think there is. And I can suspect actually, I think there's at least four of us that are not super stoked about the.
This is just till August, right, till we can.
This is, this is just to have something in place.
Till we can talk.
When it gets legalized. If we don't do anything, it could be no homes barred 100%, which may be fine, we'll comp it. But what the feds and the province are saying is have something in place. You can always change it, and whether it's just a lot of municipalities just saying no go at all and going to slowly let stuff in, and other municipalities are trying to figure out system.
I feel like our Good Neighbor bylaw covers all of this and that it's going to be the same as all the other businesses. I really, the, impair the use, I, that first bullet point, I think is the only thing that is really due to, for, in the production.
But glare is only one.
Yep.
Doesn't do with sound or odor and like that and odor.
Well, impair the use saves your livability, sort of covers all of it.
Question to Robin. Does our Good Neighbor, do our Good Neighbor bylaws have enough teeth to?
So the Good Neighbor handbook is a conglomeration of bits and pieces of our policy, of our bylaws. So it in itself is just a handbook of, it's a guideline, it's not a bylaw. So unsightly premises, nuisance bylaw. I think we would actually have to take a comprehensive hard look at what the issues around production and odor and light, et cetera, et cetera, the same as we did independently with the composter, compost facility, and how we could make it, like our regulations and tools.
So it's done, so I don't think some quite have their teeth for it.
And not permitting catalytic is the, is the one that bothers me because I know you suffer.
I think.
Nature's craft.
I think the crafting is going to come in the future when the province and feds actually legalize craft. In the meantime, we're talking about industrialized production, not specialized craft slash small retail associated with craft.
This affects all of it?
This currently affects all of it, but you can't do craft yet legally.
Or t-shirts.
Just a note, something to consider is that there will be, if we go with this temporary regulation, the next up maybe will be the zoning bylaw relive to take another look at it, which is not that far away.
Ted, no, Peter and Jason?
I'm good with the council.
Well, the other thing is we do want to have some control, and so it's just not a free for all, is take it out of all of the zoning classifications as permitted use. And so now we're dealing with the site-specific rezoning. More or less the same approach we're taking with dispensaries, with the larger buffers. There it is, and if you want to foreshorten it a bit, we have to come back for rezoning. So we could do that as a temporary measure. And just tell people, look, it's going to be site-specific. And, and it, for me, it's a lot more complicated than a dispenser. Dispensers are stores, we understand stores. But now we're talking about production with smells and noise and glare and things like that. And there's going to be some units in some places that accommodate that and other places that can't. And it's going to be very hard, I think, to generalize and say the entire downtown area is not suitable for something that it might be suitable for in certain parts or the business part. But I think we, I get the point of having something in place, so it's not a free for all. But we might just, rather than try and re-imbue zones and stuff, just say it's not permitted use, come back for a rezoning.
So we're all over the map on this. One of you said.
But if you don't like that, then I can go with.
Yeah, so we have everything from, we don't, we don't want to have any buffers to, we don't, we won't allow any of it, we come back for a rezoning. I think, I think our planning department is over inundated with rezonies. I'm not sure at this point we want to necessarily make a rezoning for all of these. I'm happy to support what's up there. It's a start, it's not an endpoint. It considers, what, what I really like to understand is the impact of this on value of land and making sure that we're not pricing other businesses out of, out of our industrial and our business zones that allow this to happen. And I'm not sure how we do that analysis, but I'm worried about that. And so I'm hearing all sides of this. I'm happy to go to middle ground on this, I've got Karen and Jason.
So I like what's proposed here. And so when I was at Lower Mainland LGA, Jody Emery.
And so when I was at Lower Mainland LGA, Jody Emery spoke and she talked about this industry and how it's growing. But she said, we want to be, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be part of the economy. And so the one way to do that, she said, is to create space where we're not in conflict with other businesses. And so that's why I keep coming back to being able to really control for noise and smell and having the teeth to be able to do that in some way, shape or form. Because what she was saying is like, we don't want to be the enemy of every other business. We want to somehow fit in, so don't put us where we can't fit in. And so that's my concern. I'm okay with taking a buffer approach, but unless we figure out that putting some sort of covenant or something around these businesses, we won't have the teeth to shut them down when they're not good operators. I think there's going to be fantastic operators out there that could fit anywhere.
So we're going to get a tool back to have some teeth on sound and noise to consider?
I was just wondering, by the requests, can we split production versus retail into two separate motions so that way it does come for a vote, but you vote on it separately?
We can pull, we can pull a piece out of the bylaw and then vote on it.
I'm just wondering.
We can certainly separate the two different bylaws.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I think that would be great if you guys agree.
Yeah.
And it's maybe, for me at least, it's a bigger thing. I mean, it's not just the location, but I think there could be good operations, properly built buildings and HVACs, et cetera, versus as an example, with somebody just moving into an old building and going up. And so part of the, part of the solution for me is to set some requirements around who could actually be allowed to be a builder or containment for producing it. And I don't know exactly how that happens, frankly, but I think that, you know, are there, without getting into a long discussion now, could we put some requirements on the operation, not just the land use, but also the physical part of the operation? Is that the zoning bylaws, is it another bylaw?
You can guess that.
Business license. So don't answer today, but to me, that's part of the problem, is you might find a good operator that could work almost anywhere, right next to a house, and a bad operator that, you know, if it's two miles away, it's still going to be a problem, so.
In the public engagement, were there many comments on the canvas piece of this?
No, I mean, there was a number of comments of support and they did speak to the need of buffers. There were a few comments saying that, you know, maybe these buffers are obsolete. And the rationale from staff's perspective was that this is a slower step to come into this thoughtfully and ensure that we're supporting these uses thoughtfully in the community, and they were quite supportive of that and understanding that this is a step forward.
And a reminder, this is a bylaw, so we'll have a public hearing on this, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, thank you. Motion for terminate, one by Ted, second by Doug, all those in favor. We are on item 42, the zoning bylaw update.
Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Jessie Fletcher, planner with Community Planning. Also here today is Carrie Hamilton, planner, and Asia Phillips, planner. We're here today to introduce the 2018 housekeeping updates to the business license bylaw, zoning bylaw, fees and charges bylaw, known collectively as the cannabis. This bylaw originally came about due to the anticipated decriminalization of commercial cannabis through the Cannabis Act, which is expected to be passed later this year. The provincial government has also provided information on how it will be regulated provincially. The district has been regulating dispensaries since 2016 and marijuana production facilities since 2012. With the new Cannabis Act and provincial information, staff have identified some areas of land use regulation for cannabis that could be improved. Throughout this review and process, a number of other land use, housekeeping and improvements were brought to staff's attention and are now included as part of this cannabis. They include some housekeeping amendments to the business license bylaw and fees and charges bylaw, as well as some changes to these bylaws to align them with forthcoming cannabis regulation. So the first up is the business license bylaw. These are a summary of the changes. Some highlights include changes that would include childcare facilities are no longer required to obtain a business license if they don't require VCH approval, VCH refusal health approval. So those are childcare facilities that care for two or fewer unrelated children. Language will be changed throughout to align the business license bylaw with federal regulations and with the zoning bylaw. So for example, all references to marijuana will be changed to cannabis. There will be a requirement for nonprofits to acquire a business license at a nominal fee of $1, which is to ensure that they meet the zoning. There will be an addition of an expiry for inactive licenses. The requirement for most businesses to acquire a landlord signature will be removed with the exception of home occupations and cannabis dispensaries. Are there any questions on the above?
Just on the cannabis dispensaries, once it's legalized, why would we treat it any different than any other business?
We haven't explored treating it differently than any other business. We still, we haven't changed the requirements that are in the business license bylaw for that, which will be requiring that they obtain a liquor control branch license as with the provincial requirements, but they will still be requiring the security plan. We haven't explored removing those requirements.
No, let me just clarify. You said that you have to get the landlord approval. We don't, if you're running out.
If you don't have, we don't have them anymore.
But for every other business, you don't necessarily need landlord approval, you just need to adhere with the zoning bylaw. Just wondering why we would, once it's legal, treat it any differently? It's a question, I'm not advocating one way or the other.
I think this is a result of just being a lot of interest out there in dispensaries. Locally, we get, every week we get multiple inquiries about opening a business here and there, and that's not always done with landlords' consent. So that's just been a business that has kind of surfaced, you know, as a number of inquiries being done by landlords knowing about it. But it could go either way, it's not.
But that's the case with every business, is it not? On that, on that topic or on a clarification for something else?
A clarification for something else that's in the proposed increases. It's okay for...
It's, I just, I just want to ask for clarification at this point.
I can make the difference.
Clarification?
Well, I don't know if it's here in another part of the presentation, but it's over 300 meter.
We'll, we'll get to that.
A question about the, oh, it's not on the slide, but it was in the report, removing, there's something about secondary suites.
We'll get to that.
And business licenses.
Yeah, we'll get to that. All right, go on.
So next up is the fees and charges bylaw amendments. So changes to the fees and charges bylaw, above you'll see new items. These are not included in the current fees and charges bylaw, but staff have fielded several inquiries regarding ATMs, KEL, horse and peddler uses. Staff are proposing inclusion of these uses at a standard fee of $130.
When did coin operator, coin operators ever become a thing? I've never seen it.
They're obsolete.
Seriously? They were a thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you define the scope of peddler?
The scope of peddler isn't defined, so it'd be a common sense definition. So somebody who came in to say they were something that would fit a common sense dictionary definition of peddler would fit the definition of peddler. It would be up to the business license administrators to make that decision.
It's not a bike, right?
No.
On this, on this slide? Yeah, go ahead.
Does a peddler include agriculture of the front?
You're peddling anything that only adds what product is on...
Like farm licensing, that we have, we allow agriculture sales from yards? Is that...
But that's different than a peddler.
Yeah, how is that, so is that agriculture at the dollar or is that peddling? Where would that definition fall in?
On peddler.
Well, I'll get to you on that.
On the agriculture. So that fee would be specific to the land where the agriculture is occurring?
It's a home-based business.
It's a land-based business, yeah.
But if it's a home-based business, is that under agriculture? Is that a home-based business or is, how is that?
If you're growing and selling, if they're growing and selling.
That'd be part of your agricultural license.
On peddler.
If we don't know what the definition is, why are we adding, like, are we getting lots of peddling applications? I'm just curious why this is here.
We have gotten applications where we tried to fit it somewhere. So we're just calling it out so it's clear.
Clear, it is, and you're a peddler.
The definition on dictionary.com is a person who goes from place to place selling small goods.
That's right.
Like a vacuum sale.
Yes, these, all of these categories came from our business license clerk who deals with it on a daily basis, and she's identified this as one of the categories that was hard to fit somewhere else, and we have had inquiries for licenses for it.
Thank you. Although Marion Webster, I think it would be good to define peddler because Marion Webster actually says it's a person who offers merchandise or fresh produce for sale along the street or door-to-door. So let's put a definition for peddler.
On that.
On peddler.
Yeah, well, that means...
I never thought peddler would get so much discussion.
But the person that's growing garlic in the backyard and selling it out front, they don't pay $130.
I think they're door-to-door garlic.
No, but I thought we allowed, I thought we allowed people to sell.
You allow it, this is just...
But do they have a license? Do they pay for a permit? You got two apple trees and you put them out front with a can saying, bag of apples, five bucks, you have to get a permit.
Maybe we should clarify, if you're selling produce that you grow on your land, do you get a $1 license fee or $130? Just so we're clear.
Yes, and there are a number of uses that are kind of incidental, you're not a business, you know, like a lemonade stand, you would need a business license. So I think those kinds of transactions would fall probably in the same category.
That was awesome, thank you.
Agriculture is also not listed in the current bylaw, a nominal fee for agriculture is recommended to encourage the use. The addition of a nominal fee for nonprofit societies permits for the issuance of a business license to these organizations, a nominal fee of $1 recommended as current business licensing tracking software requires an amount be collected and entered. Items to be deleted are largely items that are captured by other fees in the bylaw or are obsolete.
On this?
Yeah, so the secondary suite, is that captured in a different part of the, because it says not required, business license not required?
Business license is not required to offer a secondary suite.
And, I mean, I'm just wondering what the merits might be in terms of, you know, in terms of fee, it could be a very nominal fee, but if we're concerned about the inventory of secondary suites and also we are offering DCC waivers and things like that, you know, should we be requiring them to be, to have a business license? And the business license may do things like, for example, prohibit short-term rentals or those kinds of things, or we allow for it and we may charge a different fee for that, or I'm just wondering if we're not appropriately capturing that information and if the business license bylaw is the way to do that.
So the only other place that we're capturing it is in our utilities, because we have a utility charged for secondary suites, so all registered suites pay utilities, so we track them that way.
I'm not sure we get additional data from getting a business license for this. But maybe comment on that. Would we get additional data as counsel back in line?
We could get additional data.
Exactly what I just said, which is we could have conditions attached to that license that says you cannot do short-term rentals, it's not approved for short-term rentals. Is that...
It's...
That's an interesting approach.
Because if you have the utility, I mean, you're saying it's residential, but I mean, you don't, there's no differentiation right now in the marketplace. That was sort of where I was going with it.
And that's a bit of an interesting approach because we've been challenged by secondary suites coming on and then going into the Airbnb, the RBO market. And maybe if, as part of that, it's a dollar or whatever, but they require a business license and they're signing on to essentially not to be short-term rental.
It's not a...
Maybe we'll just leave that with staff to all over. On that?
On that. So the zoning bylaw, if I understand it correctly, already prohibits short-term rentals. So we already have something that says no short-term rentals. So I don't know what a business license would do, and I think we have to be careful about that because when people have a secondary suite, it is, in a perfect world, it's residential accommodation and you would expect them to pay taxes based on its residential accommodation, property taxes. But if you start saying, you know, it's a business, and then does that open it up to be reassessed as a business? And if it's an Airbnb operation, then I think that would really help things if they were actually taxed as a business, or a hotel room would be taxed. But I don't know that, in my mind, if it's a residential suite being used for the purpose for which it's intended, I'm not thinking of it as a business at all. It's residential accommodation that somebody pays for. And it's no different whether it's a secondary suite or whether you're leasing a whole house or a whole apartment, you're paying the landlord rent, but is that necessarily qualified as a business? So I think that's, it's not really that clear, frankly.
Yeah.
Those are both really interesting points. I agree with Counselor Race that the zoning bylaws prohibit short-term rentals. So we have currently over 300 units in short-term rentals. Maybe instead of capturing, the point that Counselor Race made, that it actually classifies it as a business, a rental suite as a business, but on the other side, if we're not going to fix a zoning, well, we don't have to fix a zoning bylaw, but in order to capture the short-term rentals, to actually have a short-term rental business license that has a fee attached to it so that you are capturing, capturing the short-term rentals, and then if you find that suites that have been incentivized with DCCs, they should be paying back their DCCs because a business is not meant to be incentivized with DCCs, only a long-term rental.
And we have had that conversation at council before. Jonathan?
I think this is a really good discussion, but I would suggest that we defer this piece to the short-term rental regulation, which we will be bringing back and deal with whatever happens with secondary suites as part of that process.
So just want to confirm with council that at this point, business license not required for secondary suites, if something comes back from the discussion on short-term rental, we may amend that, but this is counsel prayer?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks.
The table of increases above summarize proposed fee increases, which will keep these fees consistent with standard fees. And in the decreases table, staff recommend reducing the childcare facility fee to a nominal fee to encourage more facilities. And then in the food trucks category, food trucks are required to pay a $300 fee for a business license. Food trucks do not require more staff time to process licenses than bricks and mortar restaurants, therefore, staff are recommending a reduction in the fee to align it with standard fees. The district has received numerous complaints regarding the end of prorated fees for business licenses following the adoption of the business license bylaw in 2016. The impact of this is that businesses that begin operation late in the year are still required to pay the full fee. Staff recommend returning to the previous system. Applicants that apply for a business license after August 1st would see their fees prorated to 50% with full fee.
Thanks, Counselor Schaffel?
Thanks, I have two questions. The film, the film of 125 increasing to 130, is that enough to cover staff fees? The film, the film of one twenty-five increasing to one thirty, is that enough to cover staff fees? We spent in our, we were supposed to have this come back with, maybe this is something that needs to come back?
So there's other fees associated with filming, this is just the...
There's parking fees and land use fees, but the business license fee is meant to cover those...
The last time it came back to us, it was getting pretty close to covering the physician, but we'll get a report back.
This is not local. This is not local. This is out-of-town people coming in and using our land base. So I would like to see that increase even more. The childcare, I think, is an excellent idea, but I wonder if there should be an inspection fee at all? Because that is staff time for a home-based business that requires... Or is there staff, maybe that should be, sorry, I should have phrased...
If there was a need for inspection fee for building inspection purposes, that's...
Is that covered by the province, Robin?
Jonas, I don't know if you want to take it? Jonas, go ahead.
Okay, so on the childcare facilities, we do inspect them. And that's, business licensing is one of the, one of the most valuable things about it is we do inspections on businesses, make sure they're compliant. The principles we're using is we want to facilitate certain types of businesses that we have a shortage for, like agriculture, childcare. And so we're proposing that those types of businesses, although they might cost a little more to do inspections, that that will be offset by the rest of the application. So kind of business licensing being able to pay for itself overall. But some businesses will pay less and some businesses will pay the standard fee.
So can we just go over that?
So with childcare as well, we were still incentivizing utilities, am I correct? Utilities were set at zero for daycares. That was a bylaw that passed in 2012. Zero extra utility fees for daycares, home-based business.
Extra, the key word.
Yeah, extra, absolutely, like double, doubling the utilities on the...
They still pay the utility fees.
The house pays utilities, but there's no business paying utilities.
There's no surcharge on that.
So I think that's something that is a really amazing communication piece. So reducing the fees and charges and also the utilities could be an incentive because we do have no extra utilities on daycares as opposed to some businesses that we have extra utilities on.
Jonas, do you want to answer the film?
Yes, so in terms of principles of what, of how we collect the money is, we're supposed to collect the money to pay for the service we provide, which is business licensing. And so that's why we'd like to, as much as possible, stick to that standard fee, which is a hundred thirty dollars, which seems to be accounting for the service we provide. And it doesn't, for us, just because it's an out-of-town film company or in town, it doesn't, from a licensing perspective, service doesn't make any difference.
We have a film events staff person on, which is different than other businesses. I don't, my industry doesn't get a specific person dealing with my industry. This is a specific person dealing with a specific industry that we charge very little for a business fee for.
So we have other fees that we charge film companies, no matter where they're at.
Permit fees?
Permit fees. And we had a report about a year ago on our first year of bringing those permit fees. And I can't remember the exact one, but I thought it was about thirty, some thirty-five thousand came in. So, and I expect we'll have another yearly report soon on, it all depends on how many film days we have a year too. It fluctuates a little bit, but we have other, this is not meant to cover the cost of anything other than processing the building. And if, and, but we have other fees that film events have to pay for.
I totally agree, but if they're not covering it, then we have to find other ways to bring in revenue and this is our only other way. So if our other revenue isn't covering the cost of the service that we're providing, this is, that would be assisting business, we need to find a different way. And this is our only other way. So I would like to make sure that that's balanced, that that income balances itself with the service that we provide, which is a staff member that provides service to that specific industry and no other industry.
Just to clarify, our film events person doesn't process business licensing for, for...
Nope.
So just, let me finish. Maybe I can go to Robin. And I know there's court cases about how much you can charge for business licensing. You have to be able to prove the, what the burden is. So for things like dispensaries, it's more burden on staff with more inspections. We can justify at least bigger fees, but you have to be able...
You just said it exactly right. In industries where there's more of a burden on staff time and administration, policing, fire inspection, that type of thing, which there is for a dispensary, there's always visits, you can charge a higher fee to offset that. A film company who comes in for a day or two days and they pay a standard license, business license fee. And that helps us also with tracking the, how many days that... It's not administratively, from the business licensing perspective, anymore than any other.
I don't want to take away from this conversation, but I would, it'd be interesting to have that conversation come back with the actual members again.
We do... Thanks, Mary Hinesman. Just for clarification as well, when the district is providing a service that all businesses in the sector can take advantage of, then that sounds as just a business. Okay, moving on.
Following are fees that are outside of the business license fees. So the current fee for pre-application meetings is two hundred and fifty dollars, which does not reflect the hours of preparation and subsequent communication that is often required for these meetings. An average pre-application meeting involves upwards of twelve hours of staff time, including the planner, clerk, engineer, and environmental coordinator. Staff are suggesting a fee increase to four hundred dollars. Staff are also recommending an increase in advertising fees for rezonings, official community plan amendments, and temporary use permits to reflect the actual cost of advertising in the local newspaper and the cost of notification. Currently, there's no charge for notices on title. Staff are recommending a fee of five hundred dollars to remove a notice on title, which will cover the filing fee and a portion of staff time. And in April 2016, the district launched a food truck pilot project. At the time, a fee of one thousand dollars per location was proposed to council. Through discussions with food truck operators, this fee was amended to include unlimited locations for the one-thousand-dollar license fee. As the food truck program is well-established now, the fee is to be included in the fees and charges bylaw as a schedule.
Continue, yes?
The food truck one's a good one.
Okay, so now to the proposed bylaw amendments to cannabis, which was the original intention of these amendments. With the Cannabis Act, the federal government will no longer make references to marijuana. So to ensure consistency with federal regulations, staff recommend changing all reference of marijuana to cannabis. The Cannabis Act legalizes recreational cannabis and defines it as a distinct use from medical cannabis. The sale of medical cannabis will only be permitted online. So to clarify that the retail use for cannabis in the district is only for recreational cannabis, staff recommend changing the term marijuana dispensary to cannabis retail. So in 2016, council approved land use regulations that permit dispensaries under certain circumstances. These include that a dispensary cannot be located within three hundred meters of a school. And staff have found that the definition of school is too big. Staff are proposing to clear, staff are proposing a clear definition of school that will keep, that will help differentiate between K-12 schools and post-secondary institutions, but will also provide clarity that a private K-12 school is also considered as a school. Lastly, the conditions around the location of dispensaries or cannabis retail have also been revised to exclude their location within three hundred meters to the north, east, and south of Brenham Park. This aligns cannabis retail regulations with tobacconist vape shop regulations and was recommended by council at the April Community Development Standing Committee meeting. So staff are also proposing to clarify that cannabis retail is not permitted in the I-9 zone to clarify the intention of the zone. Currently, this retail use excludes pharmacy and liquor store. So the district currently has four active business licenses for dispensaries and the operation of these dispensaries will not be affected by any of these changes. Any thoughts on this one?
Counselor Hinesman, Counselor Ken?
So, and I know I, well, I didn't like it when it first came out, but I was, three hundred meter buffer came, I think, from probably other communities. I think that's, we never really sort of discussed the rationale of that. But, and I did support, I know, expanding it around Brenham Park. But now I'm wondering, now that it's going to be legalized, why would it be different from tobacco or alcohol or vaping? And so the other day, I drove along Oakley Avenue and right across the street from the highway, from the high school, there was a vaping store. And so do we have regulations for tobacco and vaping and alcohol around schools, for example, or Brenham Park? Or is it necessary? Or what is the rationale for the three hundred meters?
Who wants to...
I can comment on the three hundred meters. We did adopt it from another community, I think Vancouver was one of the communities that was using three hundred meters and I believe they still are. We did start regulating tobacconist uses in vape shops recently. So the vape shop that went in across the school was kind of the trigger point to start regulating it.
And the current, like, regulations are three hundred meters?
Yes. And in terms of liquor stores, we regulated in the way that every liquor store in Squamish is zone, spot-zoned for it to, for the use to occur there. So you couldn't open a liquor store without having to rezone in Squamish in a different location. And at that point, every application, new application would essentially be, are valued on its own merits.
Counselor Ken?
I'm good, that was a calculated question.
Counselor Pryor?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, once it's legal, we've got, you know, three shopping malls in Squamish all next to schools. So that means the high-traffic shopping areas for everybody coming through town won't be able to get their pot on their way to Whistler.
Are you worried about that?
Well, no, I'm just, it just seems odd, you know, like you can drive into the malls there and get your liquor, but then you have to go online and type in cannabis and get the map out and find your little store. I don't understand, what's, once it's legal, what's the difference between alcohol or marijuana or cannabis?
Counselor Hinesman?
My understanding is that even with the three hundred meter buffer, people can still apply for variance. And that allows the community to comment in the same way that liquor stores have to apply for rezoning, which allows the community to comment. And if our community doesn't have a problem, we hear about it.
It can go up next to the liquor store in the Highlands?
But the point I think is important is that this is an industry in transition and I think the public should be allowed to comment, the parents at the school. And if they don't have a problem with it, then council gets that message loud and clear. If they do, council will get that message loud and clear.
So someone can apply.
So I think it doesn't...
This is not a conversation between the two of you, so...
It doesn't distinguish between, for me, the three hundred meter buffer still makes sense. It doesn't distinguish between any industry. It's just another way for council to hear from the public, whether it's a liquor store or whether it's a cannabis or dispensary retail.
Counselor Stone?
Can I reply?
You go in a minute, Counselor Stone?
Thanks. So once cannabis is being sold at liquor stores, how do we control the three hundred meter buffer? Because that's the way the government's going, so why put in regulations that we... The regulations actually cost us money to enforce and have public meetings about and as opposed to the fact that a liquor store could go in through fifty meters from the school and sell cannabis. So that is the way our government is actually looking at selling cannabis as well as private shops. So a liquor store can sell cannabis, you can buy liquor and cannabis, but you can't have a private cannabis store.
Is the provincial government trending towards cannabis being sold in liquor stores?
Mary Hinesman, through you. Currently, as far as staff understand, cannabis will only be sold through cannabis stores and liquor will only be sold through liquor stores, but the distribution branch will be combined.
I understood it. This is, I believe the correct. Thank you. Ted?
Yeah, so, I mean, that was kind of my point.
Which was incorrect.
But...
Well, build your argument on that point.
Yeah, to...
It's yet to be seen.
But to this bylaw, so we're suggesting the three hundred meters for many schools. But if someone wants to put one in beside Canadian Tire, which is across the road from the school, they can come in and apply and we can give it to them. The reason they're applying is so the neighborhood can have a say?
That's exactly it. There is a discussion that got a variance next to that school on Tantos Road. It was about three hundred meters.
Two hundred ninety meters.
Well, it was about three hundred meters. So every, every application can go, you know, one meter.
I'm good there.
It can't be variance, it's not a use, it's a citing provision.
I can almost guarantee these are not the end, this is evolving industries, can't, can't, are they affected?
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify, so in the, in the business park, reminding of the zoning, but how much of the business park could conceivably have retail operations?
Through you, Mary, none of the businesses?
Only if it's associated with manufacturing, just like beer. So that's the case?
So the way the dispensary is written, it's written in to allow, under uses that are primary retail and we don't have primary retail uses in the industrial park.
But your report does talk to the craft, like the microbrew, the craft specialty. You're going to, you're going to grow some plants, you're going to have a small retail dispensary, retail section to your... So that is allowed supplemental retail to manufacturing in the business park is allowed, correct? Is that what you asked? Yeah?
I believe so, like accessory sales essentially would be allowed as long as the province or the federal government allows them to have them.
But I do recall that in the last time we discussed this in council, there was quite a discussion about the scope of that and I just want to clarify what we have or what staff has decided because we started talking about, you know, what is the size limitation and is that the other thing? And so did we land on a formula or like what is, what is the definition of accessory use versus non-accessory?
Well, I was just going to speak, I don't have a direct answer for that particular question, but speak broader around the production side and the connection between the retail. And so from my understanding is that you would be able to produce your own, or you'd be able to produce, have a facility that's producing marijuana or cannabis, but you would not be able to sell your own. And that's the current, that's the way the regulation is moving towards. So it wouldn't be the same as a craft brewer who, you're brewing your own beer and you're selling your own beer at the retail. You would have to be selling something, not your own supply.
And I suspect over the next three to five years, these cannabis regulations are very organic. They're going to be changing as it becomes more acceptable. Like, they've said that, for example, edibles will not be part of this first piece of legislation, but in a year from now, they may be. So it's ever-evolving. And at this point, we've, the province isn't allowing manufacturing sales to be done. So it wouldn't apply necessarily in our business park until such time as provincial and federal, federal, federal regulations actually permit it. Correct?
But, so I just want to make sure, so we're saying though that we're not actually putting a prohibition on, on that, on the supplemental sales, is that correct?
And it, no, because you're allowed to do it now.
Somebody else's. You grow your pot, you have to sell.
No, you can't, that's not quite how it works.
You can't sell yours, you have to sell Doug's.
But just, oh, my point, what I'm trying to get to is that I actually think that, you know, whenever the province or the feds allow it, that that would probably be a use that would be an economic driver in Squamish as far as, you know, grown locally and, you know, sold there and tourists and other people kind of go to the shop. And I just want to make sure that we're not putting anything in our bylaws that is going to hinder that in any way. That's, that's my only concern.
And I don't...
Notwithstanding the fact that you can't maybe do it now because of other provincial...
And I don't believe we have that yet in our bios. Wouldn't it, once it's legal from a provincial and federal point of view, it's in our, you can have accessory retail? So I'm assuming that would apply to their own production.
Yes, and I believe that the zoning bylaw dictates floor areas. I think it's twenty percent of your floor area. I think it's 20% of your floor area, something like that, that you can sell your own supply. And again, this is kind of our first step. And as things evolve, we're obviously, as we have been doing for the last couple of years, will be updating our regulation.
Now, I think I have Councilor Spell, Councilor Elliott, Councilor Rose. Megan, Councilor Elliott?
In section 4.32 on cannabis production, it talks about being 150 meters from schools and 60 meters from residentially zoned parcels. Given the conflicts we've seen downtown with production, is 60 meters sufficient? And also, how would this apply to our mud zones where we are mixing residential and industrial uses?
So through you, Mayor, we are actually gonna move to cannabis production as the next slide, so I can speak to all of those questions at that time.
Okay, so on this page.
I'm just reminding what the I-9 zone is and why we would not have cannabis retail in that.
So through you, Mayor, the I-9 zone was rezoned specifically as part of the, I-8, I-9 zones, part of the business park. And there was supposed to be a very, a smaller piece of retail, commercial retail, and it was supposed to be the hub for lunch spots or an area for the businesses in the industrial park to congregate. And then the intention there was to be very selective of the types of uses. And I believe at the time when we created that zone, we, cannabis were not a, marijuana dispensaries were not a discussion, but there was thought to put in excluding pharmacy and excluding liquor store. So we are wanting to continue with clarifying that that use should not be continued in that particular area.
Just that one area.
It's just a one, yeah.
Right, let's move on.
So medical cannabis production is currently allowed in most industrial zones. That includes I-1 to I-5 and I-8 to I-10. The legalization of recreational cannabis may spur an increase in interest for cannabis production facilities throughout the district. And currently, most municipalities in B.C. who have regulated for cannabis production do not allow production facilities within their municipality. So if cannabis production is permitted, it is only through site-specific rezonings. Staff are proposing that cannabis production facilities still be an allowable use in the district, but that we follow recent suggestions to create buffers to avoid any conflict, conflicts between incompatible uses. So in coordination with recent cannabis recommendations and best practices, staff are proposing to add 150 meter school buffer, a 60 meter residential buffer, and a 200 meter buffer from another cannabis production facility. Staff are also proposing to not permit the use in downtown and to ensure the structures are built to contain glare within the facility as to avoid adverse effects that impair the use, safety, or livability of adjacent properties, which has been a common concern and complaint within our community. So just to give some context, these, the downtown area with, in the red on the left-hand side is proposed to be a no-production zone. And while the business park area within the red will allow for production. And the 200 meter buffer between the production facilities will allow for about four to six facilities within the business park.
Oh, Elliot.
So this is, you know, the ever-changing nature of these regulations over the next few years is where I started to get a bit confused. So we talk about production facilities being 150 meters from schools, but then we have a 300 meter buffer for cannabis retail. And so once those two uses are compatible, which I suspect they will go in that direction, we now have two pieces that will be in conflict in terms of production versus pure retail. So I think we need to look at that buffer because I actually think in the next year or two, those, those things will be allowed. I think the craft cannabis growers are gonna put a lot of pressure on the government to allow retail sales from their production facilities. So I'm just.
And as we do with all those, these bylaws, we change them when we need to change them. I've got lots of questions, Councilor Elliott.
So, yeah, I'm just wondering about the 60 meter buffer in residential, whether, why 60 meters, why not 100 meters? Where did, where did it come from?
It did come from the ALR recommendations. So as to the distances, or the recommended distances for production facilities and.
ALR?
ALR.
Because you don't have to grow it on ALR land?
Oh, I know that, but ALR is a completely different context.
So they came from their recommended suggestions as recommended buffers. They, as, as kind of, we stated, I looked at a number of different municipalities and a lot of them are not regulating or not allowing production facilities or have, are consistent with those ALR recommendations for 150 meters from a school or 60 meters from the residential.
I think the ALR is, I don't know.
You're suggesting maybe larger?
Well, it's, it's just, it's not, what's it based on? Like how far is smell traveling? Like do we understand that from our downtown experience? And also, we've changed the nature of the business park so much that we, we have businesses in there that won't want to smell this all day. And I think we have to be really cautious because we create conflict in our industrial park between different users that are technically industrial if we're not careful about the regulations we set up around production in that zone. So we're just, I certainly, I think it should be further from residential. And I'm also curious about what sort of control we have within the industrial park just to make sure we're not creating conflict. And I'm not trying to put more rules on it, I just want to be careful.
I've got a bunch of speakers, Councilor Black and Wolf.
Can we go back to the previous slide?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my thought is, if we're doing bullet point number one, then why do the other things matter? And I just kind of ask that a bit rhetorically for everybody sitting around the table. But if it is actually properly containing, you know, the things that impair the use, safety, or livability of the surrounding area, then why do we need these buffer zones? Because, I mean, I can see, even though I'm not in favor of them, I can see the idea of a retail buffer zone. But these are production facilities. It's not where, you know, kids can't walk in there and get marijuana. Like that's not a thing, right? So my concern is that I don't think that, I don't know. I mean, I just think that it's an emerging industry and by putting all of these, these excessive regulations, I mean, we might miss out on some economic opportunities to try and mitigate issues that are not, not, you know, not present. And certainly we'll have the downtown facility and, you know, one could argue in general that industrial use downtown is sort of not where we're going up in the future of downtown. But I think in the business park, which, you know, I do see that area, but even if it was extended further to just basically any industrial area that, you know, we should really, that's what I would like to see. And, and again, it's like, as long as they're good operators and they're, they're running proper facilities, then there should really be no problem, right? It's more of a preconceived fear of the unknown because it's a newer industry. But, and then also, in previous times when the industry is not legalized, it's much harder for us as a district to, to deal with that. So, okay, yeah. But that's, that's where I'd, I sit on it and I'm just not in favor of more, more retake on that because, you know, they, they would be taxpayers, they would be employers, they would be, you know, it's, it's a growing business, so.
Happy taxpayers. I'm with Jason on that too. I'd like to see the least amount of regulations. And, and if they're gonna have growing places where you're gonna be able to go in and sample, we have to allow that in the downtown too. We can't just say the business park.
When they allow that, it currently, it's not part of anybody's budget.
Well, it's, the red line around the downtown was the no-boo zone for marijuana.
Production.
Well, I'm talking about production.
Right, production, yeah.
And to what Jason said there, as long as you're a good neighbor and go for it, open it up. I'd say, I, I like the idea of being the town that's famous for, yeah, grab beer and marijuana, happy climbers.
Yeah, and currently it's not for any, like, we're talking about something that we have no idea when or if it's coming down with the policy. I suspect it will in a year or two, but it's not the immediate concern we have right now. We'll wait for the province and then we can, on the craft piece of it. Susan, Doug, myself, Karen.
Thanks, I totally agree with Councilor Black and Wolf as well. And I want to point out that a lot of the facilities that are going to be opening in production are going to be lab facilities for testing and production. They're going to be, and it is economic development. And we are not talking about growing facilities. We're talking about lab and testing facilities, which we haven't addressed. Oil-making facilities, extraction of CBD oil, which is not marijuana production. It's CBD and medical oils that will have to be supplied. And currently, I have no idea where this number came from, but somebody pointed out that it's, next to governments, it's the second-largest employer in Swamish. So when you look at the amount of marijuana that is produced in Swamish currently via our facilities and how much employment it supplies.
Where did you get that number?
It was from, somebody was doing the measurement within the industry.
Somebody?
Yeah. I'm not getting you mentioning it. I know, you're like, boo, boo!
Well, no, I was just, I was verifying things that you were gonna just say.
That's, they're a high employer in Swamish, I will say that.
No pun intended.
Yes, exactly. Pun intended. But I think, yeah, I totally agree that if bullet point number one is enforced, then all the other bullet points are completely irrelevant and there's now regulations surrounding marijuana production that regulates smell and security and all the other things that people have concerns about regarding marijuana production. But not all marijuana production is literally growing plants and it doesn't take, it doesn't have to take up ALR land either.
So I'm, we have, we're already 22 minutes over time right now. We have one other big meaty topic to deal with. If at some point we're not gonna come to some consensus on cannabis, we'll just park it, we'll have to rename the bylaw. But, you know, if we're, we're all over the map on this, then, you know, this is just the first step. We're not gonna get it perfect first time around. Doug?
Well, so I'm concerned about the bottom two. And when I looked at this, bottom two bullet points, and I tend to agree with Councilor Black and Wolf. For me, the zoning, now that it's going to be legal, I don't have some of the hangups I had before about this. You know, I can understand, you know, we got a lot of complaints about the large manufacturing facility in downtown Swamish. And so, but not necessarily because it was cannabis, just because it was noisy, it smelled, had lights, et cetera. So those are the things to me that make some businesses incompatible with others. So, but then the other thing is, it talks about craft production, which is smaller operations as opposed to bigger operations. And do we necessarily want to lump them into the big operations and we're growing potato plants or something like that? It might be a big operation, it is not good downtown, but a small operation, we can allow it. Because it's the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. To me, it's the important thing. And I don't know, but I mean, if, if the smaller operations don't have the same impact on the neighborhood and just because it's cannabis, I don't want to say it can't go in the downtown area. So, but if we can control smell, if you can control light, if you can control noise, those types of things that impact neighbors for any business, then why not in the downtown area? And the larger ones have their own thing about them because now it's a large plant, more employees, there's traffic issues and all kinds of other issues and maybe it's just not compatible there. But, so I wonder about why not the craft ones in the downtown area? And the second is, why not permit within 200 meters of each other? Why do we care about that? Because, I mean, we celebrate the fact that there's a whole bunch of craft breweries and it's become a bit of a hub and they've all kind of clustered there and isn't that great? What's different between that and producing marijuana? So it, maybe it is a bigger discussion. And I appreciate the time on this today and we just wanted to rethink this a little bit in some aspects. But, but I just, I've been trying to treat this ever since university. It's the same as tobacco and alcohol and get it on an even footing once you get past the legality issue. And here we seem to be, just because it's cannabis, kind of pigeonomed into a different slot.
I'm gonna bracket this and then, Councilor Elliott? I generally agree that the buffering doesn't necessarily, I'm not concerned about that, but we do need very clear regulations if people do not comply with light, smell, sound, all those things. We need very clear things that allow us to be able to either enforce it or shut it down. So I'm not as concerned about the buffers. Here's a question to staff. Do we anticipate, as we move different uses into different zones, they could impact property prices, property values, and in theory push out other businesses? And, and just escalate land values so much so that, you know, the carpet guy can't afford square footage in the business park? Have we thought of that in these buffers? And I guess I'm mostly, in particular, the 25, 200 meter buffer. Or is buffers the right way to deal with that? Or are we concerned that it's gonna elevate land value so much that it's gonna push other businesses out of town?
That's precisely why that 200 meter buffer was in place. So if we go to this, the picture on the right with the industrial park or the business park, all of the, all of the spaces inside are zoned to allow for production facilities. So if, as we're trying to introduce and we're expecting that we may get an influx of more production facilities, we are trying to take a little bit of a cautious, thoughtful approach to ensure that not all of our available land gets used for production for a higher, for a business that may pay higher for land and then therefore may increase the cost of other lands for the carpet claim.
I suspect the profitability of these needs is gonna be excessive. One more question. I think in whatever, whatever bylaw we have, we should differentiate between sort of industrial production and craft production. And that, Councilor Rayes was saying that craft production, smaller scale, maybe we'll define that, can be considered in other zones. But I think we're probably a year away from the problems actually even allowing that to happen. So we've got time to figure that out.
So I guess my question is, since we're on the cusp of legalization and we're going to do another zoning bylaw update in the fall before the end of the term to incorporate some of the OCP amendments, why wouldn't we move ahead at this time with the retail changes to have a cannabis retail? And then look at this a little more deeply once we see all the changes from the federal government? Because I know the Senate's made a number of amendments. And, and take a more careful approach. Because one of the things about this industry is that I think it will be very profitable. And how do we make a differentiation between a responsible grower who's going to put in state-of-the-art HVAC and control light and glare and noise versus someone who's gonna buy an old building and create a lot of problems? So what I'm wondering, in the interim, we just look at rezonings as they come through? Why wouldn't we make money off of this industry in a rezoning?
One of the reasons why we want to do this now is because if we don't address it now and all of a sudden recreational cannabis production is legal, it would be undefined in the bylaw. And we couldn't argue that you can't, because we haven't defined in the bylaw, you can't.
I think she's saying define it, saying it's not used yet with the rezoning. And that's what the, the government's been very clear. Municipalities need to have something clear in their bylaws that govern this or else it'll be all hell or excluse. So either, a lot of municipalities are just saying, nothing right now and we'll take it on a piecemeal basis or we'll evolve it as the legislation comes out. Or what we're trying to do, which is figure out how to manage the situation. So it's either or, we wouldn't want to leave it blank.
I'm gonna add that. So that's definitely an approach we could take, kind of like liquor stores. But I think what we're proposing is a bit of a cautious approach, allowing it in some areas, making sure that we're somewhat in control of density and then seeing what, what happens with the industry. We've had some experience with dispensaries before we had to, we regulated them. The experience we have to date with marijuana production facilities is a lot of them are not well-kept and don't have the technology to deal with some of those impacts in neighborhoods. So it would be really interesting to see what a legitimate facility actually looks like when it comes to recreational production. And I think our condition is to put these forward first. These will not allow. These will not allow it to happen everywhere, but we are likely to get an application somewhere, and then adjust our bylaws as we learn.
I think, I want to, how many more? We have still a slew of these to go through.
Definitely. I just want to clarify one thing that was said just around the noise and smell. We actually can't, we haven't proposed to regulate that, and we cannot regulate that. So that's, the glare piece is in there, and we have, we believe we can regulate the glare piece, but the noise and the smell piece, you have to, you want to speak to that a little?
Yes.
Or just to clarify, then that's not so.
We can regulate it, but it's very difficult to enforce it, especially smell. Noise, we are not set up to enforce. We don't measure noise. So it's...
We've regulated smell before when the composters in the business park, it was lot line, what's that?
It's muzzing.
It was lot line, they were forced to shut down. So we've done it before. We have it in our bylaws.
Yes, it's very, what I'm saying is it's difficult to enforce, especially if you get challenged on it. We, every time we've had to, we've had to deal with the dispensaries downtown, that's kind of been the issue, in that we don't measure noise. And smell, I would say, is probably in a similar category.
So I want to suspend this conversation. I know that we've got some people here that want to speak to the affordable housing piece. Hoping that we can maybe do a touch, I'm going to just suspend this conversation, I'm going to bring in the affordable housing discussion, go through that hopefully fairly quickly, and we'll come back to this in 20 minutes out now. Thanks. All right, we're going to move on the agenda to the affordable housing discussion. This was meant as a touch base with the recommendations that came out of the task force. Laura, I'll ask you to come and join us.
Sure.
Because there is some new information that's not in your report with regard to one of the recommendations, the shelter aid stuff. So Gary?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So just in terms of the housing task force, excuse me, the housing task force, which did work through 2015 and 2016, and came up with these 12 recommendations, I've just tried to give a brief update on each of those as we went, as we go through. So just quickly skipping through the community management contribution policy has been back in front of council a number of times, most recently last month. I'm hoping to bring that back before council goes on its recess. That may or may not happen, but I think we really need to get that thing closed off this year.
Absolutely.
A housing stakeholder group hasn't been set up in a formal fashion, but say, between the groups that I, those agencies that are mentioned, there is an informal meeting monthly to discuss coordination of actions, coordination of policy, Laura's part of that, House and Women's Centre, Cedar Sky Community Services. And we've started to actually expand that into reps from the Vancouver Coastal Health and Cedar Sky Division of Family Practice, which is the representative set from the GPs, family practitioners. So we're broadening that, realizing that at the lower end or the more difficult end of the housing spectrum is certainly programmatical overlaps with agencies like the Family Practice Group and the Vancouver Coastal Health. So it's not formal, but it is meeting regularly. In terms of the housing coordinator, you're looking at him essentially right now, but we have, we have in the last two years provided roughly $100,000 that's mostly gone through to contracted services for policy development. That work is ongoing. In terms of identification of lands, that was done as part of the long-term real estate facility strategy. Didn't identify that we have a huge amount of lands that we can dedicate towards affordable housing. But we have identified a few sites, one of them we're active on with an application to BC Housing right now for an affordable housing project.
And I think it does identify that we need to identify common pieces we'd like to require.
And as staff, we've done that, but of course, we're not going to have that real estate discussion in the open. In terms of supportive and social housing programs, working in close collaboration, again, with the Integrated Housing Solutions Group, we've been continuing to work on that on a monthly basis. We've also helped the Helping Hand Society with land for the shelter, the under-one-roof project that's hoping to break ground imminently. In terms of the aging in place and the request to the provincial government that the shelter aid for elderly renters, that that is made consistent with Metro Vancouver region, correspondence was sent, but I'm, at the time of writing this, I wasn't aware that we got a, we'd ever got a response.
So there has been a change in policy from the provincial government. Maybe I'll just ask Laura to maybe speak to it. Thanks for joining us.
I'll pull up my email that I sent you. I'm just pleased to announce, though, that they have increased the upper limit for how much income you're bringing every month. It used to be, you know, I'm not going to take it off here because I can't really read it. So basically, the ceiling has gone up about $100. So I think we were around $650, and now it's about $750, that they will subsidize seniors up to. In the past, we, there was two different, in Safer, you qualify based on location as well, so there was two different areas. It was Metro Vancouver than the rest of BC. So what they've changed now, starting in September 2018, is they have three different zones. And the first one is Metro Vancouver, basically, and then we're part of Zone 2, which is consistent with other communities like Dawson Creek and Zone 2, Abbotsford, Agassiz, Callwood, Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, Kamloops, Swamish.
Peachland.
Peachland. So...
Terrorist.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't seem consistent to me, based on the, our rental rates are just insane here. So I'm actually in the process of doing a little snapshot on all of the Zone 1 people, which include Alder Grove, which I can tell you right now, we're paying way more in rent than Alder Grove. There's about three or four of these communities that we are way above. So I'm hoping that once, I know it's not a scientific thing going to Craigslist, but that's all I have at my disposal. So I just want to take a snapshot and then kind of show which communities should be where or move us to Zone 1. I think we belong to Zone 1. But at least, you know, there is now a change that's going to be in place for September 2018. This has been a long time coming, and it will put more money into our seniors' pockets, so that's good. We just need to be moved into Zone 1.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
I look at, we've probably got higher rents than half of the ones in Zone 1.
Yeah.
Any questions coming on that? Thanks for that word.
Yeah.
Ken?
So the seniors get up to $700 in subsidy?
No. No, they will subsidize a rent up to $700 and...
Oh, if rents are higher than that, then they don't subsidize?
Yeah, after the ceiling is reached, they don't, like, say you're paying $1,500 in rent. In the past, they would only subsidize you up to $690 or whatever it was. And then the rest, you have to suck it up.
So our new proposed seniors housing that's coming online, the people are going to have no trouble moving from one to the other?
No, because, because we're gearing those rents toward safer rates.
Yeah.
So we want it to be consistent, so that, yeah.
A few people have asked me.
I know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Just send them to me. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
They'd be happy with that, some little guys.
Jason?
Yeah, and I think we still, as a council, we got to keep asking the housing minister about that, because ultimately, if we do get into the Metro Van zone, then that means that, you know, for groups like Swamish Seniors Citizens Home Society, they can adjust their rates, you know, and have more revenue flow into the community as well, in addition to folks who are in the private market being able to, you know, call me one. So, yeah, I remove that, we respond.
We congratulate them on that.
Yeah, we congratulate them on the, across the board increase, but kindly ask them to reconsider the Zone 1.
It's all set in that. Any more discussion? Kindly. Make it kindly, yes. All those in favor? Opposed? Anyone cares? Gary, continue.
Okay, so short-term rental policy enforcement, say preliminary discussions and that work on a management or a regulatory framework is planned in the zoning bylaw for next year. Recently had a discussion on that, and that's where it landed in terms of the work plan. Workforce housing policy, there's some initial outlines on that in the new OCP. Wanting to do some further work to sort of make that operational.
Can we just go back to this for a moment? We did talk about it a couple times, about if people come in and apply for it and they're not paying a DCC, we thought at the very minimum we could get them to sign some sort of commissary or something that just morally obliges them to say what they're doing with it, which is bringing them to the rental market as opposed to, or at least accommodation market as opposed to short-term rental. Did we ever follow through with that?
On the, I'd have to check with Jonas and or Richard on the, of course, that's a building, so I'd have to check on that was done.
Thanks.
There was some work with CMHC approaching and discussing with CMHC reducing financing barriers for purpose-built rental housing, but there's been no action taken to date on that. Very preliminary discussions on cooperation with Swamish Nation on housing programs.
So can we just go back to the CMHC one? Looking to counsel to maybe, how do we engage this? Should we invite CMHC to a meeting? Should we, what's the first step in engaging this piece of the task force recommendation? Gary?
To be honest, I think it's, from my point of view, outlining what currently doesn't work. Of course, that would be the ask of CMHC. There's obviously, this came about, and I can't remember the data behind it or the reason behind it, but there is something with respect to either CMHC and/or federal tax policy that works counter to production of rental housing. So I think it's figuring out what that is, and then the ask back to CMHC is how fix, please fix this issue.
The other piece is the National Housing Strategy came in after we made these recommendations, so we need to integrate that piece into there as well. Jason?
Yeah, so to expand on that, there was a few different things, I think, in my recollection. There was also, there was something actually very, very specific to CMHC, which was, we were told from developers who are trying to build purpose-built rental projects in Swamish, that they don't qualify for CMHC financing because the data that they have about Swamish rental market is way out of date. So even though the developer knows it's financially viable if they can get CMHC funding, CMHC is closing the door. So it's sort of a bureaucratic issue that I suspect that we have to apply political pressure so that somebody talks, you know, some of the minister's staff talks to CMHC to look into it and just change it, because that's actually kind of a no-brainer, you know, even though I'm not an actuary or anything like that. But, you know, if developers are telling you that it's viable, then I think we can trust them on that.
So on that, it's a lack of data, though. I mean, as Laura just said, you know, she's on Craigslist trying to figure out what rental rates are in Swamish.
No, and they don't have, when you look at the CMHC data, they'll show X amount of one-bedroom units, and you know for a fact, they're not taking into account secondary suites that are illegal and other things. Like, it's not, it's not accurate at all.
I think you've made this point before. Most of our rental stock, with the exception of Burris Stones, is old. And so it's going to reflect the lower rents in the community, whereas most of our rental stock is not in those old purpose-built rental buildings, and so it's skewed.
The secondary market, yeah. So I still think that there's got to be a way for us to at least get the dialogue going so that if, you know, we can sort of maybe, maybe at a staff-to-staff level, some sort of an initial letter to whoever's in charge of CMHC, so that they can respond back and at least explain their rationale. And then once they've explained it, we can take another look at it and say, okay, well, based on what you're saying, we at least kindly suggest that this might be different. But I think it is something that we really need to address, because that's part of the reason why we're not seeing, like, Metro Vancouver and other municipal colleagues are actually starting to see purpose-built rental comeback in the construction market. So there was that aspect. And then I would also say the federal sort of National Housing Strategy, so-called, they haven't delivered really any money yet, so it's all back-ended.
It's a mess, yeah.
But the good thing, I think, for us to do as a district, and I think we're getting to that, is having sort of our plans and projections and our needs to be able to go to the feds and get some of that pot money coming in and, you know, again, talking with our member of parliament and that kind of thing. So, and then lastly, the thing that Gary was alluding to is part of a bigger framework, which is the federal taxation status. So that'd be something that the finance minister would control federally, and that one is, again, for market-based housing. There used to be some very incentivized regulations in terms of depreciation rates and some detailed stuff like that. That spurred construction in the 70s and 80s. That's more of a policy thing, yeah. Counselor Rayes recalls that, yeah. And so maybe for us, maybe that's something we can, maybe we need to look into that more as a council with, like, UBCM and OCIO, and see if there's already some resolutions on that.
Why don't we add that to CDC meeting in July to sort of further muster a better strategy? Counselor, go, Counselor.
Thanks. The way I understood it is that we do have a bunch of rental housing, completely rent, complete rental buildings coming online or being applied for now. I know that Target is looking at, they were mentioning that it was almost impossible to get funding for a regular building, and the only funding available now, as far as getting bank funding, is to have rental buildings. So I know that we have, we're going across the street, there's a few in the, there's a few properties that I know are going to be 100% purpose-built rental.
Which one across the street are you talking about?
Right on the corner of Dorian Second is a purpose-built rental building, and Target in the Mud Zone was going to build a rental building. I mean, until it comes to fruition, it's really impossible to say, but that one was presented as a full 100% purpose-built rental.
Do we have any?
If that's my recollection, the Mud project is the only one. There's nothing else. It's purpose-built rental.
The one on the corner here, they propose as a rental building?
I think we need to distinguish, for example, Mistral is renting out, but it's stratified, just the owners deciding not to sell it.
Correct.
And the only purpose-built one that has been proposed is the Mud one, but it hasn't come to council yet. Oh, that first one, that Aspen, yes, correct. Yeah, yeah, that's the only one, other than the one we presented.
In the Mud Zone, it was, also hasn't come to council.
Has come to council.
But Ted?
Ted, what?
Yeah, I think it's really difficult. I think you can write a lot of letters and not really have a lot of effect, but you can make your policy include purpose-built rental, you can do whatever you want with your policy and have density bonusing, and a lot of that policy has been, you know, like, we...
I disagree with that, absolutely.
But, you know, we're writing firm, kind letters now, that, you know, I just don't find it effective when we're not really getting our policy out there to say, we need 12% or 15% rental stock per building, and we give density bonus in Vex, or to ensure that our policy absolutely states a number and that we don't even, we don't even entertain housing that doesn't contain rental stock that meets our policy guidelines. And if we, the fastest thing we can do, instead of wasting time on letter-writing, is get that policy and come to council and have a management strategy, which we still really are waiting for again, which is...
Counselor Elliott?
I don't know, a while ago, we talked about getting our MP up here. Is that she longer? I'm wondering, have we extended that invitation? It'd be great to sit down with her and really understand.
Yeah, there's a bunch of issues. And she has talked about it, and then now that, it should be on some break. Yeah, so she should be up here. Yeah, we'll do that. So on CMHC, we'll put it on a future council meeting to sort of get a bit more of a strategy.
And you have to get on that policy, on the policy and when it's going to be implemented, because we can deliver land.
Can you let me finish? If you let me finish, that is not simply a, let's write a letter. It's a strategy on how to deliver purpose-built rental and communicating and collaborating with other orders of government is part of that. But we do need to absolutely make sure that we're getting it through our own policies. Next, Gary?
Maintain market supply. Looking at Jonas, as I should tell you, that that's, we're still trying to ensure we keep that thing, that beast moving. The revised regulations for secondary suites. I mean, there are a number of them that we've done over the past few years.
Did you skip over a certain section?
I just mentioned previously, very preliminary discussion. I mean, revised regulations for secondary suites is, we've done a fair amount of that and it's ongoing. We keep tweaking that. I think the next one is the incentives and the fee waivers. While we've waived DCC and building permit fees for accessory dwelling units, the next step on that, which gets a little bit more complex, are utility fee reductions and construction incentives. They're just a little bit more complex for us to, we've started getting to the finance department and Christine gets agitated when you talk about utility fee reductions.
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
So on that one, I'm also wondering, like, you know, maybe there are some more just sort of simplified ways, right? As we know already that, you know, our secondary suites are limited in terms of what the size is. And if you were to compare that, you know, to what the size of the overall unit is, it's probably, I don't know.
It's a poaching now.
Yeah, so why not, so even at that rate, just say, okay, your secondary suite, instead of giving you the flat rate for utilities, say 50% off, you know, for your utilities. Because, you know, you're going to have less people there, probably, and whatever. So rather than trying to make it very complex, I don't know, maybe that's still complex, but just a little step in that direction. But again, I think we do need to address the short-term rental thing before we add any more incentives in that regard. And I'm also wondering if council and staff think it might be a good idea to sort of, as a sort of lobbying tool and to show the community and illustrate what we've done so far and also with other stakeholders to show that. I'm going to add a little bit more into the report, so in terms of numbers, you know? So for example, maintaining market supply, right? Like, we could say, you know, we've done this. We could show over the last four years how much market supply. Or, you know, really specifically spelling out some of these things. Because I actually sometimes think that, especially when we're talking to other orders of government and with the public at large, right? A lot of people don't know all of the things that we are doing from our end. And, you know, so if we're demonstrating, I think that puts us in a better position to advocate that, hey, we got our stuff together. We got, you know, we got a platinum, we're doing our part, so you do yours, you know, and bring that in, so.
Karen?
Good, Jason made my point, just not adding anyone, so we figure out how to regulate short-term.
Gary?
That's the end of the recommendations from the task force.
Thank you. I think there's a couple of key ones that I think we're in the middle of working on, including, figuring out how we do a housing coordinator slash housing authority. That's work we need to finalize and make a future decision on. That's ongoing. And I agree with Jason, maybe just adding a few quantitative, data-driven things maybe to the report would be helpful. I think that's it. Anything else at this point? Thanks, Gary.
You're welcome.
We can get Karen and Jesse to go out. Thanks, Laura.